She is. Good afternoon. It's Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, and we are at Carmel by the Sea City Hall. And I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Carmel by the Sea City Council to order at 4:30 PM. City Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Booter?
Here.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Here.
Councilmember Jama?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilperson Barron, would you lead us, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flyer, in the United States of America, and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. So we've got a lot of work to do today, so let's get started. As the agenda says, we plan on taking a dinner break about 6:30. We'll begin our agenda items today by recognizing and hearing from some outstanding and important members of our community in our extraordinary business section. Our first item today is the Carmel High School Report Out. Things are now in full swing at Carmel High, and we are pleased to have Drew Galy here tonight to bring us up to speed on happenings there at the school. Drew, welcome.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Drew Galy. Sorry if my appearance is a bit casual. We had a senior giveaway during lunch, so I had to dress the part. Speaking of the giveaway, seniors won the homecoming competition between the gate, between the grades for homecoming, and the football team ran away with their competition against Aptos two Fridays ago. With all that was going on the weeks prior to homecoming, we did not hold a homecoming parade, but hoped to hold one during the week of November 3rd as we honor the 78th year anniversary of the shoe game between Carmel and its rivaling school, Pacific Grove. Also coming up are our senior nights for the fall athletes. What an incredible group of seniors these are, right? Other amazing accomplishments include the drama department's production of Little Woman by Louisa May Alcott. It is one of the best productions I have seen to date, might I add. It is totally worth it to go support them if you have the time. That pretty much sums up what has been going on in Carmel High School.
Are you having a good time this year?
Very, yeah. Very good time.
That's good. Are you gonna come back every month, or are you gonna send different people?
Oh, I'm coming back.
You're the guy?
As long as you'll hold me, yeah.
Absolutely. We look forward to having you back in about a month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're gonna move into the volunteer spotlight. We have Central Coast VNA and hospice here today. One of the best-kept secrets in Carmel is Central Coast VNA and hospice. I was fortunate to spend some time with Carolyn Chenzer, their Senior Director of Engagement recently, and then attended a gathering at Cypress Inn a couple of weeks back. Meeting the totally amazing people who make it happen really opened my eyes up to the impact they have on our community. Carol, I know it's a challenge to cover everything you do in three minutes, but let's give it a try.
Thank you so much, Mayor Byrne. Thanks to the council. VNA, Visiting Nurse Association, we're often confused with VA, Veterans Affairs. We're also confused with Hospice of the Central Coast. After this presentation, I hope you'll be clearer on who we are, what we do, and how we meet the needs of this wonderful community. Our mission: We're dedicated to providing the highest-quality health care to residents of the Central Coast by meeting their individual needs in a caring, effective, honorable, and accessible manner. We provide high-quality, community-based, home health care with emphasis on patient needs and goals, and we have been doing this for over 74 years. We respect and honor patients and educate and empower families. We offer a licensed professional clinical team for every patient. We have over 100 full-time healthcare professionals plus several other employees for a total of 170. We serve communities in Monterey, San Benito, Santa Cruz, and South Santa Clara Counties. 92% are from Monterey County most currently, and our current patient census, 25% in the Carmel area. We're so excited that we're celebrating our 75th anniversary next year in 2026, so stay tuned for several new educational programs that will be announced and promoted probably in early December.
Oops, I think you jumped.
Nope, there we go. Thank you. That's perfect. So our primary services: Home health and palliative care, hospice care, community services, which includes our community education and vax clinics, our connections program, our volunteers, and our bereavement programs. This is very important. We're the only provider on the Central Coast that offers a continuum of care. So if a patient comes in needing home health and then has increased needs to palliative, we're there for them. Then to hospice, we are there with a consistent, professional team of care and healthcare providers. In 2024, we served over 3,900 patients, made 73,000 home health and hospice visits, and cared for over 200 veterans. We made 2,200 bereavement service contacts as well. We provide free community bereavement services to anyone who needs it. We offer free connections programs to help navigate the healthcare system complexities and coordinate community resources. Thank you. So we have a philosophy, and these critical services, they do set us apart. They're just awesome. But they do present major funding challenges. These next points are very important for what we do and why we do it. We treat all patients in need without discrimination, including highly acute illnesses who need more visits or higher-cost meds and treatments. We don't turn anyone away. No patient dies alone. We provide dignified clinical and volunteer support through all end-of-life stages. We cover the costs for patients without insurance and/or who cannot pay. Our community services, connections, volunteers, and bereavement programs are not revenue-generating and are solely funded through philanthropic support. Unfortunately, Medicare cuts are rising, impacting our services and increasing our philanthropic needs. We cannot continue to offer these critical services without the support of generous donors. So please, all of you, spread the word to family and friends and consider donating to Central Coast VNA and hospice, perhaps through the 2025 Monterey County Gives campaign that kicks off November 13th through December 31st. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thanks, Carolyn, and keep up the great work, and thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
We're now gonna move on to a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. On Sunday, I saw an excellent new film at the Carmel International Film Festival, which focused on domestic violence. It showed the impact it can have on every member of a family and those around them. Jessica Maseius is the Chief Executive Officer of the YWCA for Monterey County, and she reached out to me about their upcoming Domestic Violence Awareness Luncheon, and this month being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. She'll be accepting a proclamation and saying a few words about their work in this area. Hans, would you like to read the proclamation? Jessica, are you here?
Yes.
All right, why don't you come up?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk about all the amazing things that our agency does. We are the YWCA. Similarly, we get confused with the YMCA. But our main focus in Monterey County is to support those who are affected by domestic violence, not only women, but it's mostly, it's about 98% women and children. But we have gotten a few mails throughout the years, and we offer all the services that you can think of in terms of someone starting their life over or starting it anew. So from paperwork to housing to jobs, bank accounts, anything someone can need, we have a team member who can support, as well as within our clients helping with legal aspects in terms of restraining orders, child custody issues, and going to court with some of our clients as well. And again, this is just an amazing recognition about all the great work that we do for all of Monterey County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you wanna read it, Hans?
Yes, sir. A proclamation of the City of Carmel by the Sea, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas October has been recognized nationally as Domestic Violence Awareness Month since 1987 to raise awareness, honor survivors, and mobilize communities to end abuse. And in 1989, Congress formally designated October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior that can be physical, sexual, mental, emotional, or economic, that is used to gain or maintain power and control over an intimate partner. And whereas domestic violence can happen to anyone, regardless of age, gender, sexual orientation, race, socioeconomic status, or religion, affecting families, communities, and society as a whole. And whereas the prevalence of domestic violence continues to rise, as more than 10 million incidents of domestic violence occur each year. And whereas YWCA Monterey County provides critical, survivor-centered services locally, including two 24/7 confidential crisis hotlines, confidential safe housing, legal advocacy, support groups and education, mental health counseling, and youth prevention programming. Whereas prevention through education, early intervention, and community partnership remains vital to promoting healthy, respectful relationships and to reducing the human and economic harms of domestic violence. Now, therefore, I, Dale Byrne, Mayor of the City of Carmel by the Sea, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens thereof, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Carmel by the Sea, and call upon the residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to: Number one, promote healthy relationships and reject all forms of intimate partner violence. And two, share and post local hotline numbers for anyone seeking help. And three, support YWCA Monterey County and allied partners through outreach, volunteering, and donations to strengthen a community where we can all live free from violence.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Well done. Do you wanna get a picture?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I will also add, we're actually opening our third safe house shelter in the next month or so, so really excited about that. Thank you so much.
Here comes Nancy, our photographer. Thank you, Jessica, and congratulations on your new role, right?
Thank you.
She just took over the job. So next month, we'll be featuring E. Cantore di Carmel here, and that's a local chorale group that has been here, if you can believe it, in Carmel for over 40 years. It's unbelievable, all the groups that have been here forever. You'll hear about this extraordinary nonprofit next month, but you can buy tickets to what will be sell-out shows December 13th and 14th at Carmel Mission Now. And don't miss it if you enjoy choral music and symphony music. They have an orchestra, and it's just beautiful. All right, we're gonna move on to public appearances. We're now gonna open Florida Public Appearances in Nova. Could you read the public appearance notice?
Yes. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established. Persons are not required to provide their names, however, it is helpful to state your names so you may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, public comments for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item, and comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. If a member of the public attending the meeting in person or remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements, then that speaker will be muted.
Thank you, Nova. How many people plan on making a comment today on subjects not on the agenda? Just a couple? Four? All right, line up. Let's get going.
Hello, my name is Maria Roos, Mayor and Councilmembers. As a resident, I want to shout out and recognize Lawrence Rohig, Annette Anderson, and all the volunteers for the phenomenal Carmel International Film Festival. They were able to attract, celebrate, and recognize local and international talent and show some incredible, heartwarming films. There are true supporters of arts in the local education, featuring films from students at Carmel High School, MPC, and CSU MB, alongside films from really seasoned industry professionals. It was an inspiring and heartfelt event like no other. I am very excited to have Carmel International Film Festival to be here in our backyard. Thank you to Annette and Lawrence and everyone who was part of it, pouring your heart, soul, talent, and time to our continuing Carmel's role as an important hub in the art world. An important takeaway, for all of you to think about it, is that the local area has the talent necessary to make a film here, so keep that in mind. Okay, I'm changing my hat, and now I'm gonna come back to you as a chair of the Community Activities Commission. So I wanna shout out for a few things. October is a very, very busy month, and I know I only have three minutes, and I time myself, so I hope I can stick to it. But here's a flyer of the activities, but I'm gonna start from the back. So I'm changing the order. Instead of starting October, the next activities, I'm gonna go October 31st, and I'm coming up. Why October 31st? Because it's the city's 109th birthday and Halloween. So we have a parade, and the parade starts at 4:30, so I'm asking all the City Council members and all of the public who come, want to attend to the parade and be part of the parade, to join us. And it starts at 4:30, and we will basically stage admission, and then we go over onto Ocean Avenue, and go down from Hunipro all the way to Monterey, then come up. But then we'll have a party, so I will welcome everyone to attend, okay? We'll celebrate big time. Then we move on. October 25th, Howl Ween. It's a pet parade and costume contest. We are not the organizers, but that's the chambers, about Isleta Plaza, but I just thought for those, all of you, because I'm not one of them, pet owners, you can bring your pet in a costume and be part of it. After that, before that, then we also have the pumpkin roll. Where else do you have a pumpkin roll? In Carmel by the Sea, we'll give you pumpkins for free. And then, you can come and talk, you see, I'm running out of time. Sorry.
You can finish.
I have two more to go. Can I extend my time? Thank you. So the pumpkin roll starts at 11, goes to 1, it's our 10th annual event, and we would love to have you all there. And then October 20th, just to watch out for this one, this one's called Challenge Athletes. We just have a tour of bicyclists coming through our town. They have lunch in our town, and they continue their tour, but they park at the Delmar area in the parking lot, so just be nice to them, welcome them to our town, and they will be just here for a few hours, so that will be one to match for. And the last one is Farmer's Market Thursday. Remember, we have a party, we always celebrate, it's from 4 to 7, that's October 16th, and the Meet the Makers is October 11, is done by Visit Carmel, and it's, people can buy a ticket, get a glass of wine, and wander around. So I just thought it would be important for you all to know what's happening. October is a busy month. Watch out for the flyers, and I'm gonna show you, I didn't bring any printed more, but they'll be posted all around town. So thank you, Mayor, for extending my time.
Thank you. Certainly seems like Maria has fallen into the right spot in this town.
It still says "time expired."
All right, you can sit down.
Good afternoon, Karen Forlito. I just wanted to bring you up to speed that last weekend was the Jeffers Fall Festival for Robinson-Jeffers, and I know you popped in on both Friday night and a little bit on Saturday. It was really a great event this year, and unfortunately, it was competing with the film festival. But I'm sure some of you have never visited Tor House, and I would like to extend an invitation. We give tours on Saturday. It was just given landmark, National Historic Landmark status, so it should be a big year. Also, I'm not sure some of you know that the city of Carmel, even though Tor House was out in the boonies, 100 years ago is when the Hock Tower was completed. And then in the 70s, it had become, the taxes had gone out so much that the family needed to get rid of the property, and there was talk of development and so on and so forth. But the city actually kicked in $25,000 back then, which was a considerable amount, to help the Tor House Foundation be formed. Hansel Adams was part of that, Fred Farr was part of that. So Tor House is really part of Carmel by the Sea in a way. And I have to tell you, I'm really kind of glad that Robinson and Yuna and their children were all the way out in the South 40, because the Bohemians were going a little crazy before then, and they managed to keep some sanity around their home. Yuna was an exceptional woman. She homeschooled the children, she made all their clothing, she did all the cooking, and she kept Robinson very busy. When he wasn't writing in the morning, in the afternoon, he was out working with the stones. So I think, you know, it's very nice to recognize that behind every great man, there may be a surprised woman. Thank you.
You can say that again. Just so everybody knows, before you get started, Tim, there are 18 people online. It's sort of nice for you to know that there are a lot of other people here, not here in the chambers.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for what you all do for all of us. We very much appreciate it. I'm Tim Tooney, I'm here, speaking on behalf of the CIA Board of Directors with two requests. First, we're requesting an update on the closed-session topic on Monday for pricing and leasing term negotiations for property at Carmel Middle School. As mentioned prior to closed session last night, this negotiation step appears premature as our community and council has not had public discussion on this possibility. Second, and with ties to the first item, we're also requesting a timely public review of the strategic priorities. The current quantity of significant topics and initiatives being brought before the community feels excessive, constraining our ability to be informed citizens with feedback that could be useful to council's decision-making processes. All of us want to be better, to better assure scarce resources, staff time and dollars are being used in a focused, intentional, and prioritized manner. Thank you for your consideration and update.
Thank you, Tim.
Hi, Kristy Ramers. I just wanted to first say that I love that the pumpkin roll is a thing that's done annually now, because back in the day when my dad was a naughty teenager, he used to steal pumpkins from the valley and roll them down Ocean Avenue. Hello, Mayor Byrne, City Council. My name is Kristy Ramers. I wanted to speak on yesterday's topic of the Mills Act. I had a chance to go back through my notes from two years ago, and I do wanna say again that this program has very good intentions, and I hope we don't just throw the baby out with the bathwater, and instead do what was decided two years ago, and look at ways we can keep its good intentions while protecting the city and county's property tax revenues. I have a few points from my past speech and letter that would help our program be more robust should we keep it. For example, San Francisco Mills Act program uses a clear, structured timeline. Applications are due May 1st and must be complete, including photos of all character-defining features and contractor estimates for the proposed work. In May, planning staff conducts a site visit. By June, applications go to the assessor's office. By September 1st, three months later, property evaluations are returned to owners for review, and then from mid-September through the year's end, the historic board and the city council make their decisions with full fiscal and project details in hand. They also have all the applications in hand at once so that they can decide which ones have the most need. I also called our assessor before the meeting in 2023 and received the same kind of answer that you got last night. He seems to not wanna do an estimate for property tax subsidies. Maybe that's a liability for him. That being said, another thing Steve Hilliard brought up when the Frank Lloyd Wright House contract was being looked at a couple of years ago, was that in the packets for the Mills Act contracts, there's the BOE formulas to figure out the subsidy ourselves. This could perhaps be something the planning department could do for any application. Steve ran those numbers and got that the Frank Lloyd Wright House property taxes without a contract would be $231,000 a year, but with a contract would be $18,000 a year. It's not exact, but it sure was close, now that we have the actual subsidy. And all you need, as council, is some numbers to digest when looking at the application. Yesterday, Jeff, you asked about the possibility of putting a cap on the subsidy, and I wanted to point you to the program in Coronado, which began in 2000. They created a resolution in 2011 specifically to cap the subsidy at no more than 50%, so this is possible. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, we can use what other towns have put in place, and I do hope we can reevaluate the program to make it work in the way it was originally intended. Maybe a community workshop could be created, I would love to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
Ken Spillfogle.
Could you sit on the mic, Ken?
I'm sorry.
Try it again. I think we know who you are, I'm just kidding. Ken Spillfogle.
That's right.
All right, go ahead.
I wanna talk about parking. I know it might be a boring subject, but for anybody that works in the business district, it's a very scary thing right now. We have tourists all day long, and very rarely are there people, there are business owners that are out there like I am every single day. I live across the street, and every single day I deal with this, talking to residents and tourists that say, "This is a nightmare. I'm not coming back. My family isn't able to meet their reservation." Whatever the reason, it's on and on and on every single day. We had opportunities that were given to us. I invested quite a bit of my money on some of the things that were presented to you guys. We had the opportunity with one of the best lobbyists in California, and that's a fact. This guy, these guys are working on some unbelievable project that they've shared with me. They've also worked in cities like ours, which they showed them how they didn't have to invest that much parking, you know, and they didn't lose that much as much as we have. We've had a parking problem from the beginning of time. I've been here since 1979, and it's always been a subject, and we haven't addressed it. I'm not saying that we have to do monumental things, but there are little things that we could do, you know, to recover some of our spaces. You mentioned that you weren't happy with, you know, the valet thing. I agree with you. But we did do an incredible job on the shuttle. We put in three to 400 people. We just need to find out where we're gonna do it. It could be 20 spots there, 20 spots there, 20 spots there. We need to get our employees to park. Otherwise, they're all over the residence area. If you're a resident, you have a house here, you see what's going on in those areas, it's very sad. I can't imagine that you guys are okay with people parking all over your properties, all over your streets. Carmel is a walking street. Why would we wanna do this? Why aren't we addressing it? The landlord, my landlord happens to be a 20-year judge. He is amazing, one of the smartest guys I've ever listened to. He had things that we could possibly do, that he stands by. You know, we have these yellow zones, where I have tons of pictures, where people park in the yellow zones, and those are so unsafe compared to what it's supposed to do, it is not gonna do it. If a problem happened, it will happen in the yellow zone. And really, we can't let it disappear. We need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Kenny's feeding us tonight. Kenny's feeding us tonight, he just said. He's going to provide the dinner. Anybody else here that wants to speak? All right, we've got two online.
Phone number ending in 004. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council members. We must, every day if we can, do something towards ending the extermination of the Palestinians by declaring Palestine a state, by calling incessantly our politicians and our congressmembers and our senators, who are voting with our tax dollars to bomb, starve children, women, and men. The horror of it all affects us all. The guilt that we are not doing enough is raw.
What you're speaking about.
Is raw on our spirits.
I would recommend that you ask for the subject matter of your jurisdiction.
I have a right, I have a right to speak, sir. You must not cut me down.
The, as the message said, you need to cover a subject that's a subject matter of our jurisdiction?
No, not under, not under free speech, not under the free speech laws with the Brown Act. That's totally incorrect. I've read it, and that is totally wrong. You are taking away our ability to address whatever subject we wish to at public comment, and that's the law. And if you don't know it, Mayor, then you are, then you need, then you need to know that.
The Brown Act says it must be related to the subject matter of jurisdiction in the city.
How dare you? That is very, very wrong of you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Got next one, Brian?
Brian, go ahead.
Hello, Brian Rosen here. There is such a thing as a resolution, and that is within your purview, and you do them occasionally. And I think what's happening to the Palestinians is relevant to the people of Carmel, because we're all one, we're all connected, all of us are one. We are those other people, and I think a resolution would be very proper. The concerns of the city of Carmel seem so minor compared, when you look at what's happening in the world today. And I would like to, and Trump, in Chicago, they're, you know, zip-tieing children, and they're, they're even tear-gassing police officers, and they're just doing horrible stuff.
Same advice that I gave you the last.
No, 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 I'm asking you to do a res, I'm asking you within your city to do what Chicago is doing, and to say, declare public property a no ICE zone. You have, you have marginalized people who work in this community, at the restaurants and so forth, and that is relevant to your agenda, so don't tell me it isn't. They work in our city of Carmel, and they can be rounded up by ICE. Now, you can declare the no ICE zone, and you can ask businesses to do the same. Down in Oxnard, a marijuana play, farm turned ICE away. We do have some private property rights. So for you to say, "We're just asking you to..."
Brian, we're not saying that you're not talking about our jurisdiction. You are, so go ahead.
Okay. Well, what I'm saying is ICE is terrorizing people all over this country, and Trump is sicking the military on the cities, and there will come a time when even sweet Carmel by the Sea will not be safe, and there's a lot of undocumented illegal workers working in Carmel that deserve your protection. It's easy to look after the rich and the powerful, they have a lot of clout. I don't see anybody looking down out for the powerless. It's very popular to punch down at the so-called illegals who are desperate to come here, but nobody wants to punch down at the, punch up at the rich employers who are hiring them and, who say they're forced to hire them. Well, maybe the, the poor people coming here feel forced to come here because they're, they're fleeing the most terrible oppression, and now Trump is making it virtually impossible to get asylum. So yes, this does affect Carmel. If less people come here escaping desperate circumstances, and in World War II, the Nazis, we turned away the Jews, they had to go back to Germany. Now we're doing the same thing. We're, we're supporting these dictatorships. So I'm just saying that Carmel does not operate in a vacuum. I would like you to do a resolution and declare this a no ICE zone, ask the businesses to participate. They'll have less places to do their stationing when they come in with their mask and their, and they start shooting people and tear-gassing nonviolent protesters, former military veterans, US citizens.
Brian, Brian, your time is up. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else in the house here? All right. We're going to end public comment, and thank you for everyone who shared tonight. We're now going to go on to announcements. We'll start with city administrator announcements.
You know, I, I don't know if I have anything tonight, Mr. Mayor, which is very unusual over the last decade. I did want to recognize the council for adjourned last night's meeting in the memory of Denny Levett, a local businessman and character in a character-filled village, and then council member Dramoff's support of doing something with the Residents Association, some kind of a celebration of life. So I thank her and the council for supporting that, and I think that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor. I apologize.
Maybe you can talk about where we're going to go this week?
You are going to the, the annual League of California Cities. You're going, and Brandon's going, and Marissa's going down, and it's three days of training with, with elected and appointed representatives from the 438 cities in California, 458 cities. It's a great educational opportunity. It's also an opportunity to kind of get off campus and talk to some of your, your colleagues about some of the challenges that they're experiencing within their, with their cities all the way from Arcata to Chula Vista. So it's a great conference. I hope you have fun, Mayor.
That's good. Thank you. City attorney.
Yes, we had three closed sessions yesterday, and there's no reportable action from those.
All right, thank you. And now council member announcements. Want to start, Jeff?
Sure. I have a, actually, a slide, a short slide presentation. Usually, we all sit on these outside committees, and I sit on TAMSE, which is the transportation agency for Monterey County. And a lot of times at these meetings, we, we make policy decisions for our organization or for the county, and so we give direction to staff. But sometimes, we act as communicators back to our jurisdictions, and this is one, this is an issue that I thought was worthwhile, that we had a presentation on last month, and I thought was worthwhile, to, to sort of raise, raise community awareness, awareness. And so I'm going to try to keep this, I'm going to try and keep this for my, to my three minutes if, if my time starts now. This is the California Road Charge. This is a program that's been sort of circulating around the, the state government for quite some, for almost 10 years. It's a, it's a proposal to replace the, it's a proposal to replace the, the gas tax with a mileage-based tax, a mileage-based fee based on how many, how many miles you drive every year. These are the issues with the gas tax, and again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into all the details that, that we had, but issues with the gas tax, fuel efficiency gains, if cars have become more efficient, revenues have gone down, increase in zero-emission vehicles, so, so the fee that's charged to 2020 and later vehicles doesn't really cover the wear and tear on the roads that they provide, inflation, and then an uneven fuel tax burden, you know, whether you own an old car or a new car, your, your responsibility for maintenance of the roads can differ quite a bit from your neighbor, even though your, even though your usage of the roads is the same. Road charge, so basically, a road charge is a replacement for the gas tax and is based on the number of miles that you drive your car. And we can go to the next one. This is, this is what I was talking about a few, a few minutes, a few seconds ago, the difference in, in fees that people pay based on how efficient their cars are, how much gas their cars are, rather than the amount of, number of miles that they drive. This talks about the $118 road improvement fee. Next slide. This is how the, the road charge would work. If everybody, if, if the rate here is, let's see, 2.5 cents a mile, and you drive 1,000 miles, everybody would pay the same fee. This is a, a graphic of how all the different states, or all the different states minus those white ones in the middle, are, those are addressing this issue, which is, which is turning up everywhere. This is a, this is slide is the history of what California has been doing since 2017, a pilot, a demonstration, a public-private roads project, and now there's actually a revenue collection, revenue collection pilot, revenue collection pilot being done on a voluntary basis and by some drivers in other parts of the state. This is, this shows that, well, this is a complicated slide with a lot of words I won't go into. The DMV is, will most likely be tasked with collecting, with, with collecting the, the fee when you register your car. I'd like to, I'll just spend a minute talking about this. There are a number of different ways of assessing the fee that have been, that have been talked about, and I think this is the most important slide in the whole presentation. This is how the state will figure out how many miles that you have been, that you have driven your car. There are low-technology options on the left. The easiest one that, that people understand, because everybody does it, is the odometer charge, you know, when you go and you have your car smogged. The smog technician looks at your odometer and says, "Hey, you've driven, you know, 12,000 or 16,000, or in my case, 2,000 miles since you had your car smogged last year." So the low-technology is a version of that, of having some professional look at your odometer, and you would be charged a fee based on that. The high-technology versions are basically different tracking devices. Some of them are built into the car, you can see that there's one that's built into your smartphone. I don't want to get into this, but this is where the contention, this is where most of the contention about these programs generally happens. And finally, the second most important slide, if you have something you would like to say, you can either talk to me, since I'm the TAMSE rep, you can convey your thoughts to me, and I will get them to the, to the transportation agency and the state, or there are public meetings that are happening very soon. There's a public meeting on the 3rd of November in Watsonville from 5:30 to 7:00, and then there's a virtual meeting that is happening on November 13th from 6:00 to 7:30. So if you have strong feelings, or if you have strong feelings on this matter, I would encourage you, I would encourage you to get involved, get involved. This is a very important issue that has to do with funding of the, of our transportation system in the state, and I and the state, I and the county and the state really want to hear from the public on what they think of the various options, various ways of collecting the tax, assessing the fee, assessing the fee and whatever are being, are being talked about. Okay?
And I think that's it. Is that the last one? Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah. So no questions. You can ask me, you can ask me questions. This is just, I'm sorry, this is just announcements, but I will be here during, during the break and before and after meetings, and feel free to come up and talk to me about it.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for your work on TAMSE.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two very brief items, just touching on what, what Chip mentioned. Denny Levett passed away yesterday, and I just wanted to express our condolences to his family and friends. Denny was just a very unique, one-of-a-kind Carmel character, beloved by many, and he will be missed and difficult to be replaced. So just wanted to share that. And then, secondly, touching on what Maria said, the upcoming Halloween parade is Friday, October 31st, and it's very fun, and if you are part of a local civic group that wants to participate, I would certainly encourage you to reach out to Leslie, and it's just a great community activity as well as a celebration of the city's birthday.
I'd like to ditto the comment about Denny. When Margaret and I started coming here 22 years ago, we stayed in every room at the Cypress Inn, so we hung out with Denny quite a bit, and then, and over the years, it's just been amazing. It's very sad, and we'll have to get used to going there without Denny. The Harrison Library Project continues to make great progress. I got an update last week from the team, and the architect said that on a 1 to 10 scale, I asked him the question, he said our project, project rates a 10. And I asked him, "Do all projects rate a 10?", and he says, "Absolutely not." Like, a lot of times, they're down in the 7ths and 8ths at this point. So we're extremely happy with the turnout, the community engagement in general, and the quality of our project team, and that's really good news. Maria covered the Film Festival. Thank you. I had a couple of things to say, but I, I have to, I gave the awards to the student filmmakers, and it was phenomenal. It's unbelievable, but just to let you know how successful it was, I had to give the award out at 9 o'clock at night on a Sunday, and there were what, Maria? Couple hundred people there, including Joe and, and his wife. So phenomenal, phenomenal, and it's, Rob, Rob from C. Monterey likes to say that we punch above our weight, and that really punched above our weight. So thank you to everybody that did that. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this. There are a couple of extra copies of the presentation that I gave. I saw a couple of people nodding their head and raising their, raising their hands and whatnot, so you can't ask me a question. But there are a couple of copies of the presentation up here, if you'd like to come up now or come up later to get one. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good, thank you. All right, now we're going to have our first public hearing of the night, and it's the only public hearing tonight. I'm still trying to figure out the difference between a public hearing and an order of business, and I thought I understood it, but I still don't. Nova's going to educate me someday. Since this is our only, only one, we're going to be considering one or more ordinances regarding tennis and pickleball courts at Forest Hill Park, including ordinances to prohibit pickleball pending study by city of sound, by the city of sound attenuation options, and ordinances to adopt rules regulating the usage of tennis and pickleball courts, and also consideration of related CEQA exemptions. And I'm not going to read all the rest of that, it's in there. This is a subject that was covered in a special council meeting dedicated to this subject, and we gave staff direction, set up a lean work group, which is Alessandra and me, correct? And we're coming back tonight to choose one of several resolutions. We'll start with the staff report. Tom, are you going to give it?
I'll be giving the staff report.
Okay, good. All right.
So we start with the fact that in March of this year, the Forest and Beach Commission recommended that the city council approve a policy regulating tennis and pickleball courts. That policy itself is, is the last attachment in the, in the staff report. And then on September 3, as you've indicated, Mayor, there was a special meeting of the city council to discuss that proposed policy and to provide guidance for city staff to bring an ordinance back, which is what we're doing this evening. Next slide. So there's four ordinances and presented to you with the agenda packet. Two of them are urgency ordinances, and two of them are regular ordinances. They include an urgency ordinance which would prohibit pickleball, and then there would be an opportunity to study sound attenuation options during that period. The second ordinance is an urgency ordinance to adopt that policy I mentioned earlier to regulate the use of the courts at Forest Hill Park. The third ordinance is one that would adopt a chapter 12.50 to the municipal code that would include the rules regulating use of the courts. And the final one is a regular ordinance to prohibit pickleball, to study sound attenuation options. Kind of the next slide, please. So the options for the city, I know that there's four ordinances, but basically, I believe that there's two options that are available to you, and depending upon which option you prefer, that would guide you as to which of the ordinances you would pass. So the first option would be that if the council is inclined to prohibit pickleball at Forest Hill Park pending the study of the sound attenuation options, then the council could consider an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance that would prohibit pickleball. That would be ordinances 1 and 4 of the ones that I listed. On the other hand, if the council wishes to adopt rules regulating the usage of tennis and pickleball courts, then the council should consider the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance regulating usage, and those are ordinances 2 and 3. The reason why there's two ordinances on each of these subjects is that an urgency ordinance takes effect immediately, whereas with a regular ordinance, there is required a first reading, which could be tonight, and then a second reading at your, at your next meeting. That way, this is often, they are often combined together as they are here and what's being presented to you, both the regular and the urgency ordinance on a particular subject. Next slide. So the recommended, no, not there yet. Went too fast. So the recommended, no, not there yet, went too fast. There's this slide to cover. The urgency, there's differences between the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance. The urgency ordinance requires a 4/5 vote of council, and it takes effect immediately, whereas a regular ordinance can be passed on a 3/5 vote, and that can be adopted even if you do not adopt the urgency ordinance. And there would be with the regular ordinance, the first reading and the second reading, and the ordinance would take effect 30 days later. Next slide. So the recommendation is that you select from the two options that were presented in the earlier slide, either to prohibit pickleball or to adopt rules regulating the use of pickleball. And then the second recommendation is that once you've made that choice as to what you want to do, then you can request that I read the title of the ordinance, and then for the urgency ordinance, the motion would be to wait for the reading and adopt, and for the regular ordinance, it would be to wait for the reading and introduce. Next slide. So I'm available to answer questions.
Anybody have a question? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. How many people are here to make a public comment about this item? All right, come on up. Hi, Barbara.
Hi, my name is Barbara Mike, and I'm a pickleball player and live in Carmel, about a half mile from the courts. And I was hoping that in the time of our last meeting and this meeting, that you got a chance to go to PG and look at the sound stuff, and also, I was hoping that you took the time to go to the courts now and see what it's really like now and not what it was like when we had four courts, because I really can't believe that it's as loud or it's busy, because when I go by, there's either four or eight people there, because there's only two courts. So I really urge you to consider that you've already limited the play there, and there isn't many people there. So the parking isn't bad, and the sound isn't bad. So it really is different than it was during COVID. So I think there's a lot of people that really enjoy playing there, and that it's a great health, and it's a community value. People come from different places and want to play in Carmel, and unfortunately, we don't have a very good reputation now there. It's considered hostile, which I think you heard in the last meeting, and I think that's really sad. I bring my dog to the beach a lot, and there's a lot of tourists at the beach that bring their dogs there, and I think that's a real welcoming place, and I think the pickleball courts should be a welcoming place. It's already limited. It's what it was like 11 years ago, so I really consider that you should think about doing that again. And all ages of people play there, and I know the neighbors don't want us there, but I'm hoping that there can be a compromise. It doesn't have to be all or none. We've already limited the play there, and I think that it should be a give and take and not just one-sided, that we can't do it. So I really hope you consider that. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara.
My name is Krista Ingles, and I live here in Carmel as well, close to the courts. And I also am hoping you'll consider keeping the limited play. The courts are actually hardly used anymore because it's put such a roof in it. If you take the play away, the courts will really not be used, because there are very, very few tennis players. You speak of, you know, wanting to side with the residents, but we're the residents as well, and there's actually a lot more people that want to be able to use it, and we don't have any other place to use. It just seems a shame to have our park not used. And so I'm hoping you'll continue play as limited as, and we all try really hard to accommodate.
Thank you.
Yes, and I live by the courts. During the last meeting, I believe there was a consensus that pickleball should not be allowed at Forest Hill Parks without any mitigation measures. I think the two mitigation measures that are considered are the use of acoustic fences and also the user-specific equipment that is quieter. So I spent the time to go to Pacific Grove. I stood at the corner of Fountain and Gibson, so south of the courts, and frankly, I was shocked by how ineffective the fences appear to be. It could be because of the topography, where I could almost have line of sight on the people who were at the north end of the courts. So I also went, I happened to be in Napa, and when the Forest and Beach Commission was working on this issue, they mentioned that Yonville had been successful with the use of acoustic fences. And there, the the courts are completely flat. Once again, I was shocked. I mean, I think if you tried to do a blind test, if you put somebody blindfolded and ask, is there a fence or not, it would be very hard to to figure out. So the use of fences, I don't think would be effective, especially given the specific topography of of our courts and the tree canopy, which has a tendency to bounce sounds back. With regards to quiet equipment, I think the only thing that might be effective would be the use of foam balls, which the players have said many times are not right or completely change the game. And even then, the the challenge, I think, there would be one of implementation and enforcement. I mean, we have seen how difficult it is to enforce the the time limits, so I can't see how we would enforce and who would enforce quiet paddles or quiet balls, and likely to be the residents who would have to to alert the enforcing constituency. So I am I am skeptical about the effectiveness of these mitigation measures. However, you know, should should you want to pursue them in the spirit of full due diligence or leaving no stone unturned, it's fine, as long as one of the ordinances is adopted and do not does not allow pickleball until the mitigation measures are implemented and proven effective and proven enforceable if need be. Thank you.
Thank you. Nova, are there any people online while she's coming up? We can't see, we can't see it on our screen right now.
There's no one with their hands raised.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Edwards. I've spoken many times with you about this. I live across the street from the courts. I do want to go out of my way to thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alessandra, for voting at the last meeting to ban it, because that's the only common sense decision I think should be made today. I want to point out that it was discussed repeatedly, that none of you would like to live near these courts. I have thought twice about living near these courts, and because all of you basically have admitted that, your decision should be very easy. You should be banning it permanently. Okay? I want to also point out that there's an enormous amount more of tennis players playing now. I don't know if it's because there's the courts are available more, but there's a lot of tennis going on. Okay? So, I mean, my, I feel like the only choice you have is to ban this. I don't understand why I'm continuing to have to pay and fund with my tax dollars more investigation for mitigation issues for a wall that isn't going to work. You're not going to eliminate the noise. And, you know, I really feel like if you guys vote to regulate this, I'm sorry, you're losing my vote at the next future elections, because I've been going through this for years now, and it's very obvious what we should be doing. So I don't understand why we're placating the tourists and the pickleball players when you're supposed to be working for us, and I live near the courts, and you're supposed to be protecting me. That's who you're supposed to be protecting. Pickleball players can find another location that can be figured out. You're already trying to figure it out at the schools, they can play on the weekends. They have their fun, and they play, and they leave, and I'm still living there, and I can hear it through my bedroom window, in my garden. I mean, it is very annoying, and unless you live there, I know it's not a problem for you, but it's a problem for me. So I really, really beg of you to make a final permanent decision moving forwards. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? One more. You were the guy that educated us on soft equipment. I remember.
Hello, I'm David Emo, I'm a resident here in Carmel for almost 20 years. I actually didn't come here to make a comment on pickleball, that's not why I'm here, but since it's on the agenda, I thought I'd come up and say something. I love pickleball. I started about four months ago. It's a fastest-growing sport for all ages. I think the benefit of it is huge for health reasons. I think that would outweigh any con when you're looking at pros and cons. I live near the pickleball court. It doesn't bother me. Where else can you see grandfather and grandmother playing with grandson or granddaughter in a sport? You just can't see that, and that's a special moment. So if I had any say on it or any vote, keep it, figure out a compromise, some type of regulation. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just one.
One more. Two more.
My name is Jane Veneman, and I'm a resident of Carmel by the Sea, and I wasn't actually going to speak tonight, but I figure, why not? Everybody else is getting into it, so I might as well, too. I've already been up here several times in the last few months, and telling you about the value of pickleball for all ages of people. I sent a letter to about Mayor Burns about a month ago and got nice response, nice AI response, too, like the whole half of the letter was, but he talked about the fact that 90% of injuries have grown since two, from 2002 to 2022. Well, so was the sport of pickleball. So that doesn't make any sense to me. And he also said that 90% of the is people my age, that people over 70 are much more prone to injuries. Well, we were the main people that played pickleball until about three years ago, and we're getting used to the young people, and we love having them play. I played today with Krista, there were four of us out there. There were no gas blowers going. It was so nice, and I don't think we made a lot of noise. I want you to consider a compromise. We have compromised since last December, when you put in this emergency ordinance. We all in Carmel by the Sea cannot afford private clubs. Please don't take our public courts away. Think about, and I mentioned this before, I live right by the Carmel Youth Center. Do you want to close that because I hear it every afternoon? No, I love to hear laughter. Please consider a compromise.
Thank you, Jane. And this isn't about the injuries, I just thought it was interesting statistics I'd share with you.
Hi, everybody. Martin Kamsey, and I live about a half a block away from the courts. I'm on Vista. I've spoken before as well. I just wanted to add some comments one more time, maybe be a little bit more specific to our personal needs. We bought the house in 1999. We bought it to be our quiet place to go, both having really hectic careers. And we are partially retired now, so it's still really important as our private place to go. I visited Portland this summer, and probably a lot of people in the room have seen the beautiful Japanese gardens in Portland, surrounded by a rose garden and some a beautiful residential neighborhood, and a whole line of tennis courts, and those tennis courts have a sign on them that say, no pickleball here. Portland has another place for pickleball. I know that we are not the size of the city of Portland, but I feel that there has been compromise on both sides, and everybody here, including staff, has done a lot of homework, tried to help look after us in this situation. I personally had open-heart surgery in 2022. I had congestive heart failure in 2019. That's ongoing. I'm on medication that slows me down, slows my heart rate, makes me tired, and I take a nap every afternoon, and my quiet is really important. I've heard other people talking about leaving the neighborhood and getting away from the noise. The noise is better with the mitigated rules. But, you know, someone who's retired can't just leave. You sell your house, you've got a capital gain. You have to buy a cheaper house somewhere else, maybe it suits your needs in other ways, or maybe it doesn't. My point really on this is, many of us bought our homes there not knowing that we were getting into this problem. There's a lot of comment about how it's a park. Well, to park in our neighborhood the size of a tennis court, other than that, it's surrounded by trees and a little bit of parking. It does create noise. I truly believe if the city was looking at putting pickleball courts in the city of Carmel, this would not be the place to do it. If there was a list of the requirements of what was needed to place a pickleball court, this wouldn't be the place, and I think it's not the long-term solution, and I would prefer to see any money spent on the right solution for the long run. So that's what I got to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Another nearby homeowner?
I'll make this short and sweet. I live very close to the courts, you've heard from me before. It really comes down to, I'll say it again, it's the noise, it's the noise, the noise. You'll hear these, everyone's talking about, you know, the wonderful merits of pickleball. I get it, it's cute and fun, but I feel like this is the only place in the area that could play. There's a lot of other venues to play at, and and this enjoyment shouldn't not come at other person's expense, and that's what's happening here. And it comes down to ethical thing as well, too. And I feel at this point, you know, we've compromised enough and have shown a lot of patience, but now's the, you know, time to do the right thing and ban pickleball there. It doesn't belong. And to be honest with you, I don't know why the city's taking on such risk here. You know, I'm talking, you know, we're at Wits End, and it just needs to stop, solace to it. It comes down to ethics, and and I hope you guys can do the right thing, and and also, I really appreciate all the effort and time you put into this, and and I know your position's difficult, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? There's a lot more than two original ones, but thank you very much for your for your good comments. All right, so we're going to now bring it back for discussion with the council. If I could, could I start? Would you mind? Could I start the comments? I'd like to start. All right. I'm going to start. How's that? I'm not used to starting. It's a strange feeling. So when we were here last at the special meeting, I believe that that meeting ended with four of us believing that option 1, based on the current options, was the option, and I'm not speaking for you now, but I believe that's where we left it. I think there were four of us that that felt that we should pause pickleball while we do more research. And let me let me stop there with that direction. Alessandra and I did start a work group, and we have been doing work, and I believe we have, we're under the Brown Act, so I actually don't know what all the other people did, because we can't talk. I can talk to Alessandra, but nobody else about this subject. So we were all supposed to go down and check out the Acousta Block implementation at Pacific Grove, which I did, and I spent a lot of time there. And I, did all the rest of you do that? We now can talk, because we're here. I really didn't want to turn this into a long discussion about all the options and what we can do, because we're not finished with our work, but I will, I will mention what I think about it, and I felt that the the Acousta Block did absolutely nothing. If it did 5% to 10%, I would be surprised, and I have videos if we want to go down that path tonight. The problem we have here is we've got six orders of business that are really important things. This is one of them, and I don't want to get, actually, this isn't even one of them, is it? This is the first thing, so we've got six more things to do tonight. So bottom line is, I don't think it works, and I, Alessandra, do you want to spend a few seconds talking about that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I also took a field trip out to the Pacific Grove Courts and also talked to some players that were there. I definitely agree. I walked all the way around. I didn't find that the sound attenuation barrier did any noticeable difference at all, and tried different positions. You could still hear the noise, and it's not just the sound of the ball hitting the racket, but you also heard the players and their exclamations and things that are to be expected when people are playing the game. One other thing that I also am concerned about, the police chief, we found out in Pacific Grove, as well as our previous chief here in Carmel, expressed concerns that that black opaque material is actually a safety issue, because the officers can't see in if they're driving by to observe what might be going on in the courts, especially at night. And just another side note is also that that material is actually And just another side note is also that that material is actually rather unappealing aesthetically. The players, uh, that we spoke to when we're there, um, they said that, um, as far as like special rackets or balls, um, some of them actually are training for tournaments and that sort of thing. So they want to play with the actual equipment that they would play in with the tournament. So they were not interested at all in any of that type of equipment. Um, I have more comments, but that's, that's it for this.
For the Acoustablock, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
So since I haven't talked to any of the rest of you, do you have comments about Acoustablock in particular? Which is the least expensive sound blocking equipment?
I have some comments.
About that? I'd like to get that out of the way.
Yeah, mostly, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, uh, like, like Dale and Alessandra, I also went to the court. I went on a Saturday morning when the court, when the Pacific Court, when the Pacific Grove Courts are in pretty much full swing. There were sixteen people playing when I was there. Um, I walked all the way around the courts. Both, you know, the courts, for those of you that don't know, the, the courts are on a corner of Gibson and something. And one of the, one of the streets has, if I'm, if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong. One of the streets has, um, the acoustic fencing material, the, 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 the street on the top that faces the building, um, that, the tall, I think that's Forest Hill Manor, is that right? Has, has the material and the other street does not. I found, so with regards to those two streets, I found that the, uh, sound block material did nothing. Um, the, the, uh, it may have been a matter of the, you know, obviously once, one side did not have sound block material at all, so that's not acceptable at all. The other side, um, the, the side that did have the sound block material that faces Forest Hill Manor, um, the courts are depressed, so the courts are below the street. Um, you know, there's a good, so I think my feet, my feet, if I'm remembering, my feet were mostly at the top of the fence. So my head was definitely above the fence and I could kind of see in. And there's very little difference in the sound. So that, you know, that has sort of swayed my mind with respect to, um, the sound block material. And I know, I, I do not think it's a viable option. I'll note that the, um, I'll note that, uh, you know, one interesting thing that I found was that when I walked on the tennis court side, um, so when you walk around the fourth side, you know, the side where there were actually a couple of people playing tennis, I could hear almost nothing from the pickleball courts. So I do think that the sound block, my opinion was that the sound block material worked on the side, worked on the fence that differentiate, that separated the pickleball courts from the tennis courts. So the tennis players couldn't hear it. Um, you know, the empty tennis courts couldn't hear it, um, you know, if you happen to be standing on the tennis courts. But that's really not our situation with that court because the, because our court stands in a, in a, our court sits in a depression basically on both sides. So I do not, um, I'm, I'm ready to, uh, ex-nay the, um, sound block material, but I hope that tonight we'll get a chance to talk about the quiet equipment a little bit, um, as well. So I would ask for that.
Hans, you agree?
Um, yeah, I, you know, so I was out there with Alessandra and Chip and, um, I would, uh, I would say that I was cautiously optimistic about the, the acoustic fencing and, you know, was pretty disappointed. It was pretty underwhelming. I think there was some impact. It, it lessened the pop to some degree, but not enough to bring it to, you know, my North Star was to try to get it to sort of a tennis type level and it, it certainly wasn't that. So.
Um, yeah, same. Uh, I've actually played on those courts and they're probably the best free option on the peninsula. Very vibrant. I mean, uh, when I went there on Saturday, yeah, all four courts were full with eight people waiting. It's, um, it's a pretty fun group, pretty loud group. Um, the sound fencing did nothing.
All right. Okay. So in terms of, of our work group, I'm doing a deep dive. Tom Ford researched this, this product called Pickle Glass, which is beautiful. And I've got materials we could present here tonight, but we really don't have time. I think it has some potential, so I wouldn't write it off. Uh, it actually works. But it's our location and how it's done. But in order to, if it was to work, it would probably be upwards of two hundred thousand dollars to do it. So it would be a decision we'd have to make. And with some uncertainty, that may be fifty percent chance it wouldn't work. So there are some options we can continue to look at and we will, no matter what we do here tonight. Uh, in addition, we have, uh, partly with information provided by Barbara, but that was a start. Barbara Lang, we have put together a presentation that shows as many free and paid pickleball playing locations within fifteen minutes of Carmel. And there are a lot of them. And there are some really nice free options, uh, some of which are probably on the borderline of fifteen minutes. But, uh, I, I wish we had time to go through it. Alessandra was planning on going through it, but really don't have time. Uh, but it's in the, it's in the packet. So if you're a pickleball player and you want to see where you can play, uh, go on our, uh, Carmel Meetings website and go through the packet for this. If you need help, Nova was happy to help you. So there are lots of places you could play with courts at least as good as the ones we have. In addition, Carmel Middle School, thanks to Graham Robertson, he exposed it with Dan Paul. Um, I spent a lot of time with Dan Paul out there last week. And they have four tennis courts, one of which is allocated for pickleball right now, but you have to use the temporary equipment. That doesn't sound good to me, but you can play there right now after three thirty and on weekends, twenty-four seven. But the really exciting thing is within, by next September, they're going to build four more tennis courts because they just turned their, their CHS one, CHS ones into a parking lot. And it's almost a parking lot now, I noticed. They're going to have four more tennis courts and two pickleball courts Dan promised me are going to be permanently striped for pickleball. And they're nice courts. And so all the equipment will be there. You can just show up. There's plenty of parking. You have to walk about half a block, but you can play pickleball there after three thirty and during the summer all the time and on weekends all the time. So that's a really good option and it's really close. It's probably seven minutes for most of us to drive there. So there are options. I, I, uh, I'm just going to start the discussion here so we can start seeing how we're going to vote. I'm still for option one and for us to continue our research, which I commit to all the pickleball players here that Alessandra and I will continue to do serious research. You'll see our presentation is pretty complete. But, uh, I'm trying to find some locations where we can go out and look at Pickle Glass, but unfortunately they're not in this state. But I have people living all over the place and I'm hoping that, you know, two in Denver, that maybe we can find out. So we're going to do a deep dive into that. And what we're talking here is, is to pause pickleball while we do more thorough research and Tom will be involved in this a little bit because he's already got a lot of knowledge. So we're, we're, we're really trying hard to make it work, but I just cannot dedicate our, our police force to, to, uh, policing and, and trying to make sure that this works. And the only way we can do that is to say you can't play there and there's an ordinance if you do, there's a, there's a penalty you'll have to pay because we're very limited on our police force. So that's my take. I vote for option one and we'll just go around and see what people think. Again, we haven't talked about this because we can't talk. So I sort of love this because it sort of plays out in real time. Who wants to go next?
Um, yeah, I'll take a stab at it. Um, so first of all, I appreciate the, the work that you're doing. You know, I'll, I'll say the, if we're uncomfortable taking a stab at a fifty thousand dollar fencing solution, you know, I'm, I'm nervous about the two hundred thousand dollar fencing solution.
You have to be darn sure it's going to work.
So I, I would propose a simpler option and cheaper option. And, and that's to try the, the, the Quiet Ball. One of these guys. Um, this is not two hundred thousand dollars, but three dollars and seventy cents or something. And, you know, some of the pickleball folks are not going to like it. We know that.
Last week, I, I'll interrupt you. Last time we were here when this came up, they were all shaking their heads no, so I didn't go that way, but.
And look, I was, I was out there. I was playing today. Um, so I apologize if some of you heard me out there, but I was, I was out there with a, a friend of mine who's actually a very good pickleball player. Um, and we played with both. We played with the normal pickleball and then we played with, this is called the Gamma Librarian. It's a, it's a quiet ball. And, um, you know, it is a different, it is a different game. You know, the spin is different, the air catches the ball differently. But, um, you know, we're, we're looking at, we're talking about an outright ban at this point. And, you know, in my opinion, if only thirty percent of pickleball players are willing to use the Quiet Balls, I still think that there's value in that. You know, it's a, it is a public park. And so if there's an adapted form of this game that brings the noise, you know, to an acceptable level and a meaningful number of people will still be interested in playing, I think that's something that's, that's worth pursuing. So my proposal would be to ban pickleball play with traditional pickleballs um, and mandate that pickleball can only be played with city provided Quiet Balls. And, you know, so the city puts out a box or a caddy and provides, you know, five of these Quiet Balls for an investment of, you know, twenty dollars or something and replenishes them as needed. And we put up signs, um, that make clear, no, I don't know if you're able to show that, that you're only allowed to play with the city provided Quiet Balls, um, with fines for anybody who doesn't comply. Um, so this is, I think it's from Denver. And obviously we can come up with something that's a lot more aesthetically pleasing than this, but just to give you a, a flavor, um, you can make it, I think, quite clear to somebody entering those courts. You stick it right on the gate that you got to play with this, otherwise you're subject, um, to a fine. Now, people are going to say, what about enforcement? And look, it's a challenge. Um, but the reality is, as many residents have pointed out, you're going to have people playing pickleball over those tennis nets anyway. So we're going to have an enforcement problem, um, no matter what. So, you know, I'd like to think that with the right signage and with fines, we can get the violations down to an acceptable level. Um, but at the end of the day, that's the point of a trial. Um, so I would propose that we adopt an urgency ordinance, urgency ordinance number one, to temporarily ban pickleball, unmitigated pickleball, and then direct staff to come back next month in November with, um, an ordinance outlining the details of the trial of a Quiet Ball system. You know, specifying that only city provided Quiet Balls are allowed on the courts, et cetera. Then we do a trial, um, long enough for word to, you know, filter out into the community that, um, and so that we get over the hump of the kind of initial enforcement issues and see what kind of the steady run rate is. And then we reconvene as a council at a date certain, um, to discuss how it went and to decide whether or not it's a workable, long-term solution.
So basically, it's equivalent of playing tennis.
I mean, it's quieter than tennis, I think.
Yeah, but that's, that's the, the net result to the neighbors is, is it's the same as playing tennis.
Right.
The, the challenge is that we're still going to have the nets there and enforcement. Maybe we can have the chief come up and talk about that after we're done with our discussion. All right. Good idea. I don't know about the pickleball people. I don't, are you shaking your heads no again? I'm not getting any feedback, so I guess. Sounds fun to me. Who wants to go? Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll say I agree. I agree with Hans. Um, you know, one thing I noticed, uh, by the way, to, for staff was, um, this, uh, this agenda packet doesn't have a policy in it. I don't know a revised policy. And so I don't know whether we, um, whether we need to bring back a policy or, you know, a note to you for later is whether we need to bring back a policy or whether we can just do this with the ordinance which obviously is stronger than a policy and not worry about it. So just for next time.
I can answer it this time if you want.
Okay.
Okay. We don't need a policy.
If we're going to have an ordinance?
Well, that's right. The reason that an ordinance is being considered is so that it can be enforced. You can't cite somebody for violating a policy. So that's why we're considering an ordinance.
So I would, I agree with, um, I agree with, with Hans. I think, uh, this is a road, um, a road traveling down. I talked about this. Um, I talked about wanting to travel down this road last month. Um, you know, I think we should try it. Um, if nobody plays, you know, if nobody plays, you know, if we can work out the enforcement issues and, or nobody plays, then we'll have an answer and we'll be finished. Um, we'll be finished with it.
All right, good.
Um, so I'm, I play pickleball a lot. Um, and, um, so first off, uh, I did a little Dr. Google, Hans. The Eisenhower, I actually, I still have two, two sons that live in Denver, well, one son that lives in Denver. I actually know where these courts are, the Eisenhower Park Courts. Um, and I've never played there. But the outdoor pickleball courts at Eisenhower Park were shut down in October of twenty-three due to persistent noise complaints from nearby residents. In January twenty-five, the courts reopened after the introduction of a pilot program using Quiet, Quiet Pickle Balls Librarians. And, um, but I know that, I know the facilities because I drove by it a lot. And, you know, it's part of a Parks and Rec department, so they don't need their police department to enforce pickleball. They have onsite people, um, that have full visibility of, of the courts. Um, and in fact, you have to go in and register for the courts. So it's a very controlled environment. And, um, so I'll just make that point first. Secondly, um, I, in the last week, played four different games with, um, the silent pickleball. So with, uh, and with different teams every time. So that was, there were a total of twelve people. I guess it was really nine people plus me each time, but, um, and it's fun. It's fast. It, it's, it's very interesting because, um, even while you're playing, you are more quiet because the ball is quiet. It, it made me realize that part of the fun of pickleball is the adrenaline um, that is, I think, actually created by the pop of the ball. Um, and without that pop of the ball, it's just a different, uh, it is a very different sport. And pickleball is, to many, it's like golf. I mean, there are, there, there's something called a duper, which is a handicap and people are, you know, in pursuit of, of a duper. I'm not. But it's the point that there's tournaments. There, it, it's, it's a real sport. It's not just something people play in the park. Um, and to alter any piece of it is, is unhelpful if that's what you're trying to do. I'm not saying it's not fun. I thought it was fun. And it's quiet. It is quiet. Um, so my biggest, uh, problem, challenge, because I'd love for this to work. I would absolutely love for Carmel could be the librarian pickleball capital of the central coast. Okay. But it's the enforcement. We don't have a Parks and Rec department. You know, we've converted Tom into a Parks and Rec person out of Public Works and actually distracted quite a bit of time to the topic over the last year. And I, I really don't want to be spending, sending our police force down, um, as enforcement. So I, I just, perhaps, um, I'll tell you what, I'm, I'm going to Denver probably next weekend with my back heals. And, but my back is sore because I played too much pickleball. But, uh, I'll, I'll go, I'll go by the parks and see if it works, if that's worth something. But, um, I, I'm, I'm afraid of us doing the experiment. And I don't know how I stop someone, because if the nets are still there and people will come in with regular pickleballs and play and they'll ignore the signs. Um, and I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not convinced we'll make progress and we'll just be back here again. So I, I'm reluctantly, um, inclined to support either one or four because one takes four votes.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see.
Thank you. Um, Bob, I echo your comments, especially about the Quiet Ball. Um, the, the enforcement issue, it's, it's not really fair to our police officers to be out there and, and, you know, having the neighbors call in. I mean, there's better use of, of their time. And as I said earlier, um, the players who are preparing for a tournament, one of them even said something about like, we listen to the pop, like part of the pop, part of the noise is part of that getting ready and, and how to play in the tournament. And so this changes it completely for them. So I, I just have reservations about that. Uh, I just wanted to touch on the Pickle Glass. That seems to be the newest sort of innovation. It, it is expensive. It tends to have the look of like a very modern glass building and yet we're in this natural sort of setting. So it's a little incongruent. Um, the other thing is also the manufacturer says it's up to fifty percent reduction. So that doesn't necessarily mean that it is fifty percent reduction. So there's some concerns with that too, as, as well as the cost. But, um, I, I think, as I said before, with the way the Forest Hill Courts are But, um, I, I think, as I said before, with the way the Forest Hill Courts are situated in, in that valley and the closeness of the neighboring houses, I, I really think the only thing that we can do is, is the ban. Um, and I, and I certainly have nothing against pickleball as a sport. I think it's wonderful, great exercise, social, fun, everything. Uh, but it's just not right in this residential setting.
All right, I think.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to, um, a couple of things Bob said. I think, you know, we, we have a lot of things, you know, first with respect to the experimentation. I think that we, you know, I think that it's incumbent of us to, to give this a try. You know, it may, you know, it's in, you know, fifty-fifty, you know, there's some odds that this is gonna fail. But I think that, I think that it's worth trying. And, and I would point to, you know, in, in that vein, I would point to, you know, the, the, the fact that we allow unleashed dogs through a significant, um, through a significant amount of, a significant amount of our town. Um, you know, we allow, we allow unleashed dogs at Mission Trail Park. We allow unleashed dogs on the beach. Um, you know, dog owners are responsible, by and large are responsible. And when there's a problem, um, when there's a problem with a dog, yeah, someone calls the police. But I think that we owe it to, you know, the pickleball community. And, and sure, maybe they're not going to, maybe they're not going to adopt this and, and that will be the end of it. But I think we owe it to, uh, the pickleball community to say, you know, here's what we're providing, you know, you can use these quiet balls or not. Um, and we hope, you know, we expect that you will be, you will be responsible. I don't think that either Hans or I want to have a situation where the police are going out there, you know, five times a day, five times a week or five times a day or whatever. And I think we should give it a try.
So it seems to me that if we do option one and people wanna play with a soft ball, they can. It's tennis, it's not pickleball anymore. It's not the same sport, right? And if, and if, but if they play pickleball with the old equipment, it's banned. I mean, we can't really stop people from, from playing with the soft equipment, even if we say we're going to, other than we take the nets away.
Well, my argument would be, if, if you're gonna do that, then just go for the proposal I was talking about, 'cause you'll have more protections. You'll have a sign that lets people know that there's fines, et cetera.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, they can go do it with, with or without the sign.
Right.
Chief, can you get up for a second? We do need to move on from this. We do, we do need to take a vote on this and, and move on, 'cause we've got a lot to do tonight. But it's been, it's a great discussion. So tell us what you think, 'cause, uh, we've got two proposals, both of them banning pickleball, but one of them allowing you to play with a different version of pickleball that's quiet. How can we enforce that at all, even the, even the ban?
Yeah, we, we would do our best. We would definitely respond when we can. But I, uh, I would be very interested to hear what Denver, if that's where the softball courts went. I have heard of a couple courts going to the soft, um, paddle and ball. Um, but it is a totally different game from my experience. Uh, so yeah, I guess the answer is, if, if there's an ordinance, then we would respond like we do now, which is when we're available and it would be a lower priority call for us.
And, but, but the difference is now you can say, this is an ordinance and you cannot play, 'cause right now you just leave. You tell them it's not cool and leave, correct?
Correct, but most people are very cooperative right now.
All right, um, all right, we have two options.
Well, suggestion would be, uh, to just amend the, uh, if we want with number one, just to amend it, to be a little more specific, Hans and Jeff, that, 'cause really what, what the ordinance is saying, the emergency ordinance is saying, ban pickleball while we pursue the research of noise attenuation, um, options. And perhaps you could get more specific with a motion, um, that, of course, can we change an order? Yeah, we can, we can modify the ordinance.
Yes, worst case, it takes thirty days.
Sort of, uh, what I'm thinking is that you, you just get specific in terms of direction. Um, and that, uh, the, the, uh, the research on noise reduction to include a two-week, four-week, six-week pilot, um, of quiet equipment. Fund, and it could be funded by the city, 'cause it's not a lot of money. Which I think is what kind of you're asking for anyway.
It's basically what you're saying.
You just wanna give it a try.
Yeah, I, I think, um, a couple of things that stick in my mind. Um, one, I appreciate that you're trying to open the ball for these quiet balls, but I don't think that pickleball with a tennis ball is tennis. I think it's still pickleball. So I don't think, I don't think that, um, unlike, unlike you, I, I differ, that I don't think that if we pass ordinance one, and, and I will vote for ordinance one, but I don't think that, um, pickleball players are allowed to play with a quiet ball on a tennis court when we pass ordinance one. And then, you know, I think there's a little bit more to, you know, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable doing this, um, sort of ordinance surgery on the dais. I know we're not gonna do it tonight. I'm not sure I feel comfortable even doing it in one meeting. So what I would ask, what I would propose is that we have staff bring back a policy, um, you know, sort of a, sort of a, um, um, an outline for what the revision to the ordinance would be next month. And let's have that discussion, you know, perhaps on Monday of next month, before we have them come back with a revision to the ordinance. So I don't, I don't think we should do ordinance revision on the dais. I think that's a, that's a bad.
And I'd be for just voting for option one.
And just dropping it.
We can always do what you're saying, come back again.
You know, Jeff, I, I think, I hear what you're saying. And generally, I think that's a best practice. I'm just, you know, if, if Bob, Bob's, I think, gets us to a similar place, right? Where, um, if we're directing staff to come back through this, you know, through this ordinance, um, directing staff to come back with, um, with sound attenuation options related to a quiet ball. Um, I mean, I still, I still personally think that we should just have them come back with a trial next month. I don't think it's brain surgery to figure out how it works. And we're not gonna learn from Denver, unfortunately, because it's not a comp, because they have, as Bob mentioned.
So what's your proposal?
My proposal is to pass ordinance one now, which aligns with what the majority of the council said last time, which is, we're not comfortable with unmitigated pickleball in the eyes of the park. So that, I think, is consistent with that. But why don't we just direct staff to come back next month in November with an ordinance, um, creating a, uh, what's necessary to, to create a trial of a city-provided quiet pickleball trial.
It's a new option we could add on to the ordinance we passed tonight.
I think, uh, Mayor, that, um, what could happen here is that the ordinance, as it's written, um, I think complies, based on what I've just heard, um, with that. And it, it, since it does say in section five that the city administrator is hereby directed to take appropriate action to study potential sound attenuation options, um, I, I believe that, that the city administrator's sitting here, and I'm sure he heard you, um, and that he could include in the direction, based on your comments, the study of the quiet ball, um, and probably not spend time looking at a two-hundred-thousand-dollar fence that apparently, there's questions about whether it works.
Yeah, I was listening very intently, but if you could start from the beginning and just sum it up one more, I'm joking. Um, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, but, but eventually, we're gonna need to come back and codify the restriction on the use of the equipment. So, yeah, we could go with option one, but as Mr. Barron's suggesting, so the count I have is, I, I think I've got two to prohibit outright, two to prohibit until we amend the ordinance. So it's conditioned on the use of the quiet equipment. And one, Mr. Barron, bring it back in whole cloth.
Well, I think, I think Hans's proposal is to bring something back next month, too. Like, Hans, I think the only, the only daylight between me and Hans is I think we should have a short discussion next month before we ask Ryan to go back about that. I mean, the ordinance that you're gonna bring back is gonna have to talk about penalties, for example, you know, fines and whatnot. And I think that that's a, I think that that, the enforcement part of this, of this pilot program, I think that, you know, that's where the rubber meets the road. And, and I think that having that discussion under the guise of some program that, that staff has put together, um, is maybe putting the car. But if, but if, if the majority of the council wants to do that and wants, wants to follow Hans's direction to, um, to bring back, you know, the, the proposed plan as an ordinance next month, amending this ordinance, then yeah, I'd be okay with that.
That'd be my suggestion, Mr. Barron. Just like we did tonight, we'll bring it back, poised for your adoption. But if you'd like to make modifications to it and have us bring it back in what would be December, we can do that as well. But you do, if you wanna prohibit pickleball play, rather than going with our current format, which is recommended by Forest and Beach, you need to take action on option number one tonight.
So it sounds like option one is what we're, and, and it has the flexibility for us to research other sound attenuating options, including soft balls.
Yeah, my answer is that, uh, is yes, from a legal standpoint. And then if you can't get four votes on the urgency ordinance, um, to, um, prohibit pickleball, then you can, uh, three votes would pass ordinance four, um, which is basically the same provisions. The problem is that if it's not an urgency ordinance, it doesn't take effect immediately.
Right, so Ryan, can I ask you a question? Can, can I make a motion, um, to, to move to adopt, um, uh, ordinance number one? And in parallel with that, for the council to direct staff to do X, Y, and Z in terms of coming back next time with an ordinance?
Yes.
And do both in the same motion?
Yes, you can do.
Can I take a stab at a motion?
Please, yes, go ahead.
So I make a motion, um, that we adopt, uh, ordinance one and that we direct staff to come back next month with a, um, with a regular ordinance, uh, creating what's necessary for a trial of quiet pickleballs.
A regular ordinance, not.
A regular ordinance.
I'll second that.
Yeah, a question, uh, just to clarify. So would the, assuming it passes, would the ordinance number one still be in effect while the trial takes effect, or does, how does that work?
Ordinance number one, as it's written, says that it remains in effect until it's been rescinded. So the answer is yes, that the, the prohibition would remain in effect as long as the ordinance remains in effect. And then at whatever point, if, for example, you adopted the regular ordinance and, um, there, there's the waiting time, you could leave the urgency ordinance in effect pending the effective date of the regular ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, roll call, please. Unless there's any, any further discussion. We've got a, we've got a second.
All right, Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tum Delft?
Yes.
Councilmember Jammal?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, everybody, for your attention and, and comments tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, so, uh, yeah. The next item is not going to be fifteen minutes, which is our six-thirty break. So we're gonna take a dinner break right now. Sorry about that, everybody. I have to take orders from Chip on dinner.
Mayor, what time are we coming back?
Twenty minutes? We'll be back, we're gonna be back at twenty to seven, twenty minutes to seven, six forty.
We're back in business here at 6:41 and we're going to move to orders of business. The first order of business item is consideration of the city council resolution 2025-087 directing staff to return to council with a comprehensive street address program that includes a process to begin implementation of an address identification system and an ordinance repealing relevant city municipal code sections for council's discussion and guidance. Who's got the staff report tonight? Oh, I think it's you Robb.
I have the staff report.
You're the staff tonight.
Yes, I am.
All right, why don't you just go ahead?
Thanks, and forgive me for doing this from my seat, but I think it's better I can see everybody anyway. So, next slide, please. So, the address group, the address group formed in April, six months ago, after we had a very long city council meeting, really to get the new council up to date on the topic of addresses in the city of Carmel. And at that meeting, I realized that I really didn't have enough information at that time to make an informed decision. I had also been approached by these people, prior to that, wanting to form a citizen committee, essentially to give the topic a little more oxygen, a little more daylight, a little more time, to ask a lot more questions and get a lot more answers, and really just do the research necessary to help the city council make a better informed decision. So, our committee consisted of Kevin, Nancy, Paula, me, and Emily representing staff. It was a very productive, fun group. We met once a week for six months. Next slide. And these are really the kind of the major topics that we took on. We started with the United States Postal Service, really revisiting a lot of the work that had been done by a previous ad hoc committee. We developed an address prototype. I'll just take a minute on that and why we did that. What we figured out, first off, I just had the basic question all along of if I approve standardized addresses in Carmel as a city counselor, what will that look like? What's the system? Because it's not just about slapping numbers up on buildings. It has to be a systematic approach. And therefore, Kevin really led this effort. We realized, no, we actually need to develop a prototype. We need to do an analysis of the various options and systems that work, and then pick one that we think works best for Carmel. And then with that prototype, we could have a lot more meaningful conversations with our first responders, with the utilities, with the county, because we could explain, you know, this is what we're thinking about doing, and we could get a real reaction to them. We weren't just talking about, you know, vapor. It was something more substantive. And then we had conversations with our first responders, with the utility companies, with the county, and then we had two community forums. And really, this presentation is a very condensed version of what we presented in those community forums. Next slide, please. So, regarding the United States Postal Service, this is one of the most important things to understand in the world of addresses, that the United States Postal Service does two distinctly different, related, but very different things. The first is they continue to do what they've done since Benjamin Franklin founded the post office in 1774, I think, is to deliver the mail. And in Carmel-by-the-Sea, they accomplish that by, you know, the mail goes to our post office, and they stuff the mail into our P.O. boxes. That is common in rural, small communities across the country. I think there's a perception that we're somehow unique, and that the fact that we have to go to the post office to get our mail makes us special, that Mr. Devendorf, you know, wanted that to happen, and that's a legacy that, you know, comes directly from the founders of Carmel. Now, it may be that they did make that decision, but literally thousands of other communities across the country and millions of people get their mail the same way. It's the only choice they have. So, we're not all that special in that regard. And yes, there are many other communities, typically larger urban communities, where the mail is delivered to their physical address, to their home. But that is not the case here, and it won't be the case. So, nothing changes. Secondly, and this is the most important, the United States Postal Service maintains the address management system. The AMS is the national safe source for address validation. And, you know, address validation really didn't exist 20 years ago, that if, you know, you fill out a form and you put your address, it wasn't getting checked to see if it was a valid address. But the technology that has evolved over the past 20 years has increasingly emphasized address validation, because more and more people want to understand that we actually live in a real place, for various reasons. And increasingly, that the address management system has sort of been, you know, the, if you're in the address management system, all of that technology that's been developed across the country and across the globe works. If you are not in the address management system, most of that technology ignores you. And so, in this, we are unique, because our addresses, our traditional addresses, I live on Camino Real, three southeast of Fourth, that is my traditional Carmel address, is not an AMS compliant address. All the other cities I talked about that do get their mail delivered to a P.O. box, I moved here from Tilleride, Colorado, that's what we had, but we also had AMS compatible addresses. Mine was 502 Russell, and my P.O. box was 6645. And that's common. Next slide. All right, let's talk about the prototype. First thing we did was test, and by testing, what I mean is Emily actually developed a really excellent relationship with somebody at the postal service who's in charge of AMS. And that was a real gem of a find, because not only did we find her, she answers Emily's phone calls. And federal government doesn't always happen. But, so, our first thing was, well, let's prove that Camino Real 3SE4 doesn't work. And, you know, that's really where we started, because if I could make Camino Real 3SE4 AMS compliant, that would probably make the most sense and make everybody happy. But we tried that, and then we tried every variant of our traditional address. And a lot of you know the tricks, that, you know, if a system won't take Camino Real 3SE4, it might take zero Camino Real 3SE4, or it might take three Camino Real SE4, you know, if you put a number in front of it. We tried all those variants. The answer was no, no, no. Said, okay, now we got to move on to the other options. I'm not going to dwell on these, but Kevin did a lot of work. And we looked at, one would be to continue the county numbering, the unincorporated numbers that are used in the county. If you're in Carmel Woods or in On the Point, all those homes, they have post out, they're not in our zip code. They have post boxes on the street, and they have five-digit numbers. When they invented that system, they left numbers for us, if we ever wanted to move to their system. We dismissed that as just not being very Carmel, that, you know, it was funny, when we talked to the county, the county said, it's our desire that every municipality use the same Monterey County numbering system. And then the next breath, they say, and not one single municipality in the county has decided to do that. Yeah. We want to be our own thing. We looked at quadrants, you know, just dividing the city into four quadrants and having addresses that go out from a center point. And that's common in, for example, Washington, D.C. It's too hard. It doesn't take advantage of the fact that we have numbered streets. We looked at consecutive numbering, which is just kind of a crazy system that is AMS compatible. Manhattan works on this system, that the beginning of every street is number one. Doesn't matter where the street is, it's number one. And so, each street ends up being almost independent of other streets. It's AMS compatible, but it's chaos. So, we just decided not to go with chaos. So, we ended up with a prototype that works on the alignment of streets. Next slide, please. So, this is hard to see, but let me see if I can, yeah. So, this is the north side of town, south side of town, west and east. And the system we ended up with basically really takes advantage of the fact that we have numbered streets, one through 13. That's a, it's a gift in the addressing world. And so, if you start with First, now, the city doesn't actually start at First, it starts at Vista. And there's actually these two blocks up here, I'll come back to those. But if, you know, if the city did start at First, you could just start numbering. So, any house that is between First and Second is going to have a three-digit address, starting with one. So, it's going to be 1XX, even on one side, odd on the other. And so, you basically have 50 numbers per side of the street to cover all the homes. Almost every block in Carmel has 10 homes, almost. So, plenty of numbers. And you could have an A.D.U. in the backyard and still have plenty of numbers. And so, if you're then on Santa Rita between Second and Third, your address will be 2XX, even on one side, odd on the other. And that works all the way down to Santa Lucia with, basically, if you're between 13th and Santa Lucia, you're now into a four-digit number. It's going to be 13XX, even on one side, odd on the other. Then, so, that's the basic framework. And then we go back to this bit up at the top, from Vista, there's actually two blocks from Vista to First. We just basically make Vista zero. So, between Vista and First, all the houses will have numbers under 100. So, they'll have two-digit numbers. So, we'll have two-digit numbers in a couple of blocks, a lot of three-digit numbers, and then a few four-digit numbers as you get further to the south. Well, then, that handles north-south streets. Eighty percent at least of our homes face north-south streets, but we still have streets that are on east-west streets. So, what did we do? What did Kevin do? We basically said, all right, we're blessed with the ocean as an edge. We have an edge. So, let's call that zero. And then, let's just start numbering. And as you move from west to east, every block will be an increment of 50. So, really, between, for example, scenic and San Antonio, scenic is 50, and San Antonio is 100. And then, between San Antonio and Carmelo, that goes from 100 to 150. From Carmelo to Camino, 150 to 200. So, it's just in 50 increments. It's very rare to have more than two homes on any of these west-to-east streets, other than in the commercial core. And that takes in, conveniently, that ends up, so that Huniparol is actually 500, which, it's just something that works. Then, some exceptions that we have to take care of, for example, is, oh, Mountain View. Mountain View is a diagonal, and up by the, running by the Forest Theater. Well, you just decide, if you have a diagonal, we're going to treat it like an east-west street or a north-south street. So, we treat Mountain View as a north-south street, because it does intersect with the numbered streets. And then, Viscayano and Crespi are diagonal the other way. We treat those as east-west streets. The central core gets more, oh, another interesting, you know, things we have, just as examples, you know, we have Fifth Street, Ocean, sorry, Sixth Street, Ocean, Seventh Street. Ocean doesn't, basically, between Sixth to Seventh to Ocean, those are all going to be in the 600s. So, between Sixth and Ocean, your number would be between 600 and 650. And between Ocean and Seventh, it's going to be between 650 and 700. So, it works. There's ample numbers for the whole thing to work. And then there's, you know, other anomalies, particularly Carmel Way, these houses in here, which most people think are in Pebble Beach, they're, we have a system for them. Basically, we, they have numbers on their Carmel Way, we just keep those numbers for them. And then, one other bit is like Jeff and I live over in here, where, you know, Fourth, Fourth kind of just goes this way, right? And so, what we just do is, we just pretend that Fifth runs all the way through, that Fourth runs all the way through. I don't know if I explained it that well, but I live between Fourth and Ocean on Camino Real. There will be houses on my block that have, that are in the 400s, the 500s, and the 600s, because, you know, you just kind of pretend like Sixth and Fifth went through to our houses, even though they don't, because there is no Fifth or Sixth. And similarly, Jeff lives between Second and Fourth, there is no Third. So, you just kind of have to pretend like there is, but then the system works. And then downtown gets more interesting, but it's really not. It's just more complicated. It's just more granular, that a lot of the buildings that may have multiple tenants in them or multiple storefronts. For example, Carmel Plaza will have one address. And then, within that are just all the unit numbers. And there's rules for that, probably similar for the arcade and a lot of those buildings. Next slide. Okay, so now we have this prototype. Let's go out and talk to our emergency responders and others. This was the most enlightening conversation for me. It actually began in February, when my colleagues here kind of launched the topic. It had nothing to do with addresses, it had to do with response times. Because, you know, we, I think most of you know that we outsource our fire protection to the Monterey Fire Department, which we've been doing now for 12 years. It's a fantastic system. Monterey Fire provides fire services to us, Pacific Grove, Monterey, the airport, Sand City, and I'm missing one, probably.
Language Institute.
Oh, Language Institute. And just to take the tangent, it's great, because it gives us And just to take the tangent, it, it's great because it gives us economies of scale, it gives us a big fire, fire department in all of our small towns. But that's a contract, so part of our contract is we ask them to measure response times and report them to us so that we can try, try to keep them under five minutes. My colleagues were probing on that at the time and saying, well, if it says five minutes, is it really five minutes? And the answer we learned was, well, no, because it doesn't factor in some things. Basically, the response times that are reported to us start when, when the truck is leaving the, the fire station, wherever that fire station is, because it's not always ours. And it stops when they think they're at their destination. They think they're at their destination. So what we discovered is that we have translation delays, and this is because of our traditional system. That if you call nine-one-one in the city of Carmel, we run our own dispatch function. We have people in our police station who answer your call. And they get a lot of information. I mean, let's, our response times are fabulous. And they're fabulous because we have a great crew, fire and police. They're great because our assets, I mean, our people and our, our vehicles are located within a mile of every one of our homes. So that's a really great starting point. But they could be, kind of the punchline is they could be better. So, but anyway, if you call nine-one-one in the city of Carmel, our Carmel Police Department dispatch people, they take your call. And they take your call because they speak the language of our addresses. They're expert in our addresses, they're trained in our addresses, and they know what the right questions to ask you are to figure out if you really know where you are. And once they do that, well, because, you know, yes, you, I, I know I live at Camino Real three S E four, and I know what that means, but my, my kids don't. So, and if they're calling, they, so, so our dispatchers know what to, what to ask. So, once they do that, and that can take anywhere from a few seconds to thirty seconds, and Chief Tomasi before left, said it could really typically be between thirty seconds and three minutes of transition, translation and triage time to get it right before then our dispatch calls the county. Because central dispatch at the county provides dispatch function to every other first responder in the county. You know, we're the only one that, ones that have this, this function of our own, right? And, but the county then takes our call, and then the county still performs the dispatch function, you know, basically calling the assets to get them moving. So that's the first bit of delay that's not included in the response times reported to us. The second bit really is included, but it's a reality that, you know, we have, there's always a significant chance that the people that respond to an emergency in Carmel by the Sea are not coming from our centrally-located police department or fire department, and our ambulance is also at the fire department. And that's just because they're somewhere else, and that they got called somewhere else. And the, the most common is that our fire and ambulance can get called south to, to Big Sur. And when that happens, one of the great benefits of being in the Monterey Fire Department universe is they just start kind of repositioning in real time. The address, the, the ambulances do the same, but they're not necessarily as close as they otherwise would be if our, if our people were at home. So that takes a little more time. But really, the thing is, the further you get out from the people in our firehouse, who have been specifically trained in our address system, the higher the likelihood they're just not familiar with, with it, and it just takes them longer to find it. And again, the great news is the firefighters and paramedics that are in our firehouse, they sign up for two years, for two-year stints. They're self-selecting into our community, and they're here for a lot, an extended period of time, so they have excellent familiarity. And for the, whatever, you know, eighty-five, ninety percent of the time that it's them, that's great news. I'm more concerned about the other fifteen percent, when they're coming from somewhere else. The other thing on this, and this is Kevin learned more about this, but, you know, when we had that tsunami warning recently, the, I guess would be the emergency response team at the county, you know, they were trying to figure out, okay, what do we do if this thing's real? And what do we do if, in the aftermath? And, you know, this is one where they wanna be able to come in and use their, you know, their apps to basically say, yeah, we checked this house, it's empty, we checked this house, it's empty. And they couldn't figure out a, a, a really good way to do that. So, you know, and then you think if it's FEMA or somebody from further out. So the further out you get, the less familiar they are. Finally, the onsite search. Again, I said, the response time stops when the, when the driver of the vehicle thinks they're in front of our house, but that doesn't include the time it takes to really find us. And I think, I, I, I know I've had the experience, and I've heard, heard it from many, the experience of a firefighter coming to your door, looking for your neighbor. And especially at night, because there's just, you know, it's difficult. That, anyway, that adds more time. How much? We, we don't know. But a little to a lot, I think, is the answer. Next slide, please. So, had good conversations with the leadership of both the fire department and police department. Bottom line is, they would both quite like for us to have AMS compatible addresses so that they can find us with greater reliability and efficiency. I think it's that simple. Next slide. All right, the legal analysis, I'm not gonna get into this too much, but I'll just, it's the first bullet point. Our, our traditional addressing system does not comply with the legal requirements of the California Building Code, the California Fire Code, or the California Residential Code. So a, a, a way to say that is, our current system really isn't legal, and we've codified it. And so, as Brian has advised us, should we, should we decide to move forward with standardized addresses, we have to sort of undo the somewhat illegal codification that we have done. Fair?
Yeah, the answer is yes to your question you just asked. The city would need to adopt an ordinance that would rescind the current code, and then the result of that would be the city would be required to comply with the fire code, which it's already required to do.
Yeah. Next slide, please. Utilities. This was also a high point of this conversation. I was really afraid that the major utilities, because they're big and we're not, would not have any time for us, and that, you know, again, should we move to AMS compatible addresses, that they would not make it easy for us, and to the contrary, might make it difficult. And to the contrary, we talked to PG&E, CalM, Comcast, AT&amp;T. In all four cases, they, they brought their A teams, they brought the right people. I've shared this before, but I, I had a career writing billing systems for utilities and implementing them, and as a software company. So I kinda could cheat, I knew what questions to ask, but I also could tell if they brought the right people that knew how to answer the questions, absolutely they did. And in all cases, they showed up with multiple people, you know, not just the customers, not just some customer service rep, and not just some regional face, but it was the people that wrote the systems, that understand the data structures, et cetera. And in all cases, they demonstrate, demonstrated a real eagerness for us to have AMS compatible addresses, because they want to be able to find us. And I've said this before, but, you know, PG&E delivers natural gas and electricity to our homes, those are volatile products. And if you call them and say, I smell gas, they would like to be able to show up very quickly. And under the current system, you know, they're not all that familiar with us, it depends who comes, and in terms of what response you get. But all of them, and CalM talked about, let me, let me go back. Something that's really important to understand is that even though we would be changing our physical address with these utilities, our billing address does not change. And that's what they care about, they, they really wanna get our money, right? And as long as our billing address is unchanged, they're gonna get their money. So yes, they were, they're eager to change Camino Real three S E four to five oh two Camino Real. They're also willing to try and do that in a way that is as easy as possible for us, for their customers. And all, all of them basically said they would put out all efforts to really kinda do it in a batch mode, so that, you know, they would do the work. Essentially, we provide them with a spreadsheet, if you will, that they can then use to just go in and update the physical addresses in, in all of our records. And that, therefore, we don't have to take on the burden of doing that. TBD how well that works. I'm, I, I keep saying people, to people, I left with a very high degree of confidence that they're, that they're gonna put out best efforts. Yeah. Next slide. All right, this one is interesting. This, it, it, we talked about the county, but, so we met with the county. The county, along with the United States Postal Service, is hugely important in really our findability. Because the county maintains the geographical information system, but they also maintain tax records, assessment records, voting records, and, and they really are kind of the center of gravity for a lot of other people who use addresses. The post office and the AMS are, that's the central point of validation, but for various technologies out there that are trying to sort of populate themselves with, with address information that includes, you know, ge, you know, geopositional data, for example, that they go to the counties, it's not just Monterey County, counties across the country own this, own that function. So this is the five-step process required to essentially implement an address. And this is a process that would be followed, for example, in Marina, if they were building a new subdivision. And, you know, so we're gonna sell, follow the same more or less process, but we're, you know, we're not moving into new houses, we're just moving into a new number, right? So, you know, step one is the research review, safety, technical standards, et cetera. Actually, as, as part of our prototype, we've accomplished that. And we've also taken that prototype and shown it to the United States Postal Service, and they've, you know, preliminarily blessed it. The next, the step three is essentially street, you know, developing the system. And the prototype is very, it's, it's, it's pretty far along, just because Kevin just kept working on it and kept walking around and, you know, we didn't talk about houses on corners, as an example. You know, if a house is on a corner, what the, what the first responders want us to do is know, which street does the front door face? And so you live on a, you live on a corner and your, your front door faces a north-south street, so you're gonna have a address on that north-south street. But Kevin had to walk all, the entire city to look at every corner, to, to understand it, so. So, step three, we're probably more than halfway finished. And then step four and step five are still, that's still work to do, which is, once we have our system finished, we take it to the county, and they just do the things that they do to make sure it's, it works, then they populate their records, primarily their GIS. That then feeds all of their systems. And then step five is the distribution list, where, you know, AT&amp;T, the postal, the Postal Service, PG&E, Comcast, CalM, COD, et cetera, they are basically notified that Carmel by the Sea has these, these addresses, come and get them, right? Next slide. All right, then we took all that information and went to the community workshops. We did this presentation as a tag team, it took about an hour to give the presentation. In all, we were out of there in under two and a half hours. The first meeting, we had seventy to eighty people, we filled the room, and the second time, we had fifteen to twenty. I think the summary of this is that community members were engaged and provided meaningful feedback through questions, concerns, suggestions, that we then incorporated into everything you're hearing from, from me here. Next slide. So what changes and what stays the same should this group decide to move forward with something? So what do we preserve? Mail delivery to the P O boxes is not gonna change. The, the way the post office, you know, the physical building operates, won't change. You'll still have the same eligibility for a P O box that you have before, and most importantly, no need to change your billing address on, for, with anybody. What's new? Would be an AMS compatible physical address for deliveries and emergencies. It's, it's a number on your home. It's a four-inch-tall number visible from the street. How, how you design that number, where you place it, there's, it's up to you. And, you know, I think the main thing is that you can see it from the street. And then AMS compatible system integration, you know, that's sort of the big win, is, you know, once you implement these AMS compatible addresses, then the county can put us in their system, and then, you know, the rest of the technology universe can, can begin to know where we are. Said differently, Google Maps will know where we are, Uber will know you where you are, et cetera. Next slide. So this is my house, the one on the left is, I, I post numbers now because I find it helpful, that's three S E four. And I think I will be, I think my new number would be five oh two, should we do this, and that's what that looks like. Those numbers are four inches tall and two inches wide, and are visible from the street, which is fifty, about fifty-five, zero feet away. Next slide, please. So, here we are, finishing the address group's work. We said it would take six months, it took six months, we're proud of that. Should the city council decide to move forward with the resolution, that resolution is essentially directing the staff to come back with an ordinance, it's actually just repealing a previous ordinance, complication we don't need to get into. And any, any new ordinance requires two readings, so it would take through November and December to actually kinda have it on the legal books, which would allow you to begin, what I believe is more, it's a three-to-six-month implementation and change management project that could start in the first quarter. It could really start before then. Next slide, please. All right, I'm gonna tease out the top five questions that we, we received mostly in our public meetings. How much will this cost? I, I don't know exactly how much this will cost. We were careful to stick to our mission of fact-finding, and very careful not to kind of exceed the authority that was given to us, and, you know, we, we stopped, while we looked into the, kind of the crystal ball to say, okay, what are the steps required to do implementation, we didn't, didn't take the next step and actually do a work plan and a cost estimate. I think we have the information we need to do that, and can do it pretty quickly. But, you know, that's dependent again on what the, what the city council decides to do tonight. It, in my opinion, it's not a big number at this point. I think we've done the work. And the lion's share of the work is really designing the system and, you know, having these conversations. So I think it's mostly staff time, I think we're gonna still rely on some volunteer time for this. But, you know, fifty thousand, under a hundred thousand dollars probably, maybe a lot less. You know, I'm not gonna promise anything until we get a calculator out, but I, I just don't see it as a big number. And again, because in, in many regards, other people do the work, the county does a lot of work, and the utilities are saying they'll do quite, quite a bit of work. How can we ensure delivery if the sender uses a physical address instead of a P O box for packages routed through the United States Postal Service? You know, this is a problem we have today, that, you know, we, if, when you shop online and they ask you for your address, they don't, you know, some, some say, we don't take a P O box. And if that's the case, you know that they're not sending it through the, through USPS, that it's gonna come through the, through UPS, FedEx, you know, somebody like that. And in that case, you give them your physical address, today, Camino Real three S E four. And, and if you know it's gonna go to the United, VA And if you know it's going to go to the USPS, you give it your PO box, right? And if you don't know, you do what Sharon tells you to do, which is, Community Real 3 Southeast 4th, comma, pound, 2861. So that if it ends up in UPS's hands, they go to the physical address, and if it ends up at the post office, they've got that 2861 number, and they know that it belongs in your PO box. And by the way, you know, if FedEx and UPS can't deliver stuff, they just dump it at the post office, and they handle it for us. So that doesn't really change if you have a different physical address. And what changes is that that physical address you put in will actually be allowed by the validation software. And so having lived in, again, in Telluride, Colorado, where we had the system of USPS PO boxes and physical addresses, the standard, and everybody knows this, and you put it on your business cards, it's what you give out, you always put both addresses, you always give people both addresses, 123 Main Street, and then the next line, PO box. And if they only give you one line, you fit it all on there. So that you, there's never a guarantee that what somebody puts in the mail will get to you. And a lot of that is some of the kind of alchemy that the postal service performs, and frankly, a lot of that depends on how helpful the people at the post office choose to be. I mean, ours are very helpful in that regard, but I think it remains kind of unchanged. The next one, how much effort will be required by the individual property or business owner? No, not none. And will the postal service help? So, as I said, a lot of the work will be done by the county, a lot of the work will be done by, we think, the utility companies. But there's, there are still plenty of people that we do business with, that we're going to have to take personal responsibility to communicate with, that our physical address has changed. And the question is, do they care, and how urgent is it? So I actually went, you know, I kind of approached this afternoon as if, sort of like I was moving, you know, what are the things I need to do if I'm moving to change my address? Well, in this case, I went through and thought about all the entities that I do business with, and asked the question, first off, do they care? Are they even interested in knowing what my physical address is? The second question, is it urgent that they know my new number, if I have a new number? And the third is, is it my responsibility to tell them? And so the ones that I know are going to be very interested, and that probably should be treated with urgency, and that I need to take responsibility. The first one is my alarm company. In fact, as your alarm company doesn't really know where you are, you know, they got a guy in Salinas that answers the call. They call central dispatch at the county, so there's nobody doing the triage function for them. So, you know, they find us, but it's an imperfect situation. So as soon as, you know, you get an AMS-compatible address, yeah, you want to let your alarm company know, because that'll open the door for much better response time via them. Then I think the other ones that it would become urgent for is anybody that makes deliveries to your physical address. That, you know, once the kind of the system and the technologies are populated with the new physical addresses, you want to make sure that you go into your Amazon, you know, account and change it to the new one, because they're going to start using that pretty quick. And that's, you know, true for like your prescription, if you get prescriptions by mail, anything that's coming to your house that's really important, that they pretty quickly understand the new system, that's on us. You know, if you use Uber and Lyft, I think that's another example. But that's kind of it for the ones that I think are particularly urgent. There's a whole bunch that are, then there's some that are interested and will treat it as urgent, but it's on them. So they'll do the work. And that's really, we know it's PG&E, CalM, Comcast, AT&amp;T, and we have not had a conversation with Greenwaste, but that would be the other one. All right, interested, yeah, they're interested in knowing where my physical address is, but not that much. So it's not urgent, but it would be my responsibility. Examples there are your various insurance companies, health insurance, particularly your home and auto insurance, State Farm's going to want to know, you know, where your house really is now. Life insurance, you know, your cellular provider, you know, finance companies, if you lease a car, or if you've got a mortgage, your bank, you know, if you have investments in an investment company, those type of things, because over time, they do want to know what your real address is. And then there are entities that you do business with that just do not care, because they don't have any reason to care where you live. And examples that I have are a Netflix account, or a Sirius XM radio. And the list of those is actually quite long, I just kind of tried my own. One of the things that we need to address should we move forward with, it would be a change management plan, that really kind of provides a sort of a how-to do this, and that maybe we would host some workshops, and just kind of make it a lot more predictable and understandable, so that we can all get the results that we want. All right, what about, you know, we got a lot of, you know, well, there's an app for that, or technology will solve the problem, technology will save the day, we don't need to change our numbers. Let's let technology solve the problem for us. And I think the answer to that one is, yeah, maybe. But I think the fact is that the technologies here, and I said this before, they started 20 years ago. And they've been advancing for decades. Again, I think Google Maps and Uber, that have all developed their own systems, frankly, UPS, FedEx, they all have their own systems, and we're not in them. We're not in any of them. They've just kind of passed us by and ignore us. And so then, you kind of have two paths. You can conform and go in the AMS-compatible direction, in which case, all of those technologies will help with our findability. Or maybe you can try, and this was, Wayne Moon kind of asked the question, and he was sort of asking, could we invent sort of a Rosetta Stone? You know, remember the Rosetta Stone was the thing that translated hieroglyphics into Greek? You know, is there some sort of system we could invent that would translate our sort of traditional hieroglyphic address system into an AMS, something AMS-compatible? And I think the answer is yes. You can create that Rosetta Stone. I think the challenge is getting anybody to use it. You know, you can't force UPS, Uber, Lyft, Google Maps, Apple Maps to use our Rosetta Stone, and I don't think they'd be really interested. But then, the other side of that is, should we want to go in that direction, we're sort of putting ourselves in the technology business, and I think we're in enough businesses, and I would be pretty cautious about putting the city of Carmel into the technology business. Finally, will address posting requirements be enforced? We talked about this one a lot in our group. I mean, you know, the fact is, fire code, building code, those are law, and the law says you should put your four-inch numbers on your building. And laws can be enforced. And I think the reality is, if, and I did this, I kind of did a field trip around Monterey and Marina and Seaside, and just kind of looked at the addresses. Consistency and conformance is highly inconsistent. I don't think in any of those communities there are address police out saying, that's not four inches tall, or you don't have a number on your building. So I don't think it's a thing. I mean, the reality is, our current address system, or our future address system, they work better if we all post them, because it creates a pattern. It's a pattern that's visible from the street. And before we had the machines, we all knew how to use those patterns, to find if, all right, I'm looking for number 12. Okay, there's number six, oh, there's number 18, 12 must be somewhere in the middle. And that's true whether it's 23 Southeast 4th, or 502. So, you know, my, I think that the advice on this topic that came out of the address group was, just get started, have a education program that is encouraging and educational as to the benefits of posting a number, but that we don't need to have address police. Next slide, if there is one. But, um. So, questions? All right, that's your job, sorry.
Any questions?
From us?
Any questions from the council?
I've got three. Thank you, Bob, very thorough presentation, appreciate that. You mentioned Google Maps, has anyone from this group reached out to them, and how would they proceed to change everything so that our numbers go in there?
Thanks. No surprise, somebody in our community works at Google Maps in a senior role, Kevin found him. He and I talked. Also, no surprise, Kevin found him. We talked to him, and it's essentially, as soon as they know that numbers are in AMS and in the county system, normally it would take four to six weeks, because they're just continually sweeping the world of addresses to keep them current. But Kevin could make a call, and he'd probably get it done a little bit quickly, and then he thought he could drop a call to the guys at Apple Maps and tell them, you know, we're ahead of you.
Get a competition going there. Two other questions. This was almost a comment. I was just surprised to find out you just need to put the numbers, is that correct? You do not have to actually put up your street name? Just wanted to confirm that with you.
Absolutely. And as Nancy would want me to remind you, sorry Nancy, if you have, if you've named your house, please keep your name on your house, and she'd like all of us to name our houses.
Super. Our last one is, these workshops in education, I'm just hoping that there will be somebody continuously available even after those, where if somebody's running into some kind of a problem with a company or someone, they can turn to for help so they don't get frustrated, whether it's someone from the group or someone from the city.
Well, I think ultimately, someone from the city, and, yeah, I think that's part of the work to do, is figure out where does that belong.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On this slide, can you put up this slide? On the process development overview, the one with the three steps, where are we?
We'll get it up here.
Where are we right now?
There.
Yeah.
We're 70% of the way through three. We did the upfront work as a group. We talked to the United States Postal Service about what works and what doesn't. We developed the prototype, which is the system, but it's still got some work to do, especially in the core. And, so I'll say 70%, so probably a month or two there. And then, you know, four and five, all we've done is scout those to understand what they involve, but we have not started those at all.
I don't have any questions either. Let's go to public comment.
Hey, Dan, could I ask that, could we let my colleagues from the address group just kind of give their comments first? These guys did an incredible amount of work.
Absolutely. Sarah.
Great. Nancy Toomey here, member of the tag team. As you know, I have been historically a proponent of status quo, utilizing our descriptive directional addresses, traditional addresses, et cetera. But I also, you know, hear the issues and have experienced some of the issues ourselves with our home. It is on a corner lot, so it's easier to find than a lot of people that are in between a block. And I, again, am very sensitive to the challenges that that represents for the rest of our residential community. But I also knew I wanted to be a part of the solution, and/or crafting the necessary details so that a decision with more insights could be made in your chairs up here. So I did want to, or, let's see, this is, the findability of our personal home is relatively easy, as I had said. However, this is not the case for visitors, businesses, and residences in our village. And again, I am very sensitive to the challenges and the issues that they face. There is no question that our dependencies on technology are increasing, you know, at a really high rate, and we can't kind of close ourselves to the world of the internet and all of the advantages that some of those tools can bring to our security and the like. So, and of course, this was all accentuated by the COVID lockdown, when we were all stuck in our homes and reliant on much more delivering, that kind of thing. It was essential for me personally to understand what was involved in implementing addresses, and who the stakeholders were, what they would do, what we need to do as individuals, what the city needed to do. I wanted to get a better sense of the who's on first model that would be involved in this implementation, and that was critical for me to say, I absolutely am in support of making this happen as an individual resident and involved participant in this research effort. So we have done that research, we know much more than we did before. I think it's a more informed decision that's in front of you. And again, you know, if you decide tonight to move forward, you've got my vote big time. Ultimately, for me, this came down to not only having the benefit of this research, but also relying on safety is like number one for all of you up there, it's all critical for all of us, especially as we age in place. And then, legal. We shouldn't have to be able to pick what laws we respect and what laws we don't. This is a legal requirement, we also have that as a critical aspect. And so I now fully support moving forward on this, and as Bob had mentioned, I do want to encourage everybody to promote their house names and the like as we move forward, because that is a cultural tradition that is worthy of retaining. So the more of that, along with the numbers as those roll out, are, I think, a critical part of us overcoming the challenges that we've faced historically. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. If you could stay for a second, Nancy? I'd like to thank you for the incredible time invested and the professional performance that you did in the work group.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank each of them, and I will. I have a question, if you could take your Nancy Toomey hat off and put your CRA hat on?
Yes.
Has the CRA board taken a position on this at all?
So in the survey work that we have done historically, it was a, basically a half and half from our membership when we surveyed now two years ago. So we hadn't taken a position one way or the other. I believe, if we were to make a tally right now, I think in individual conversations with the board members, they have overcome any of their hurdles of believing that this was something to do, and that's me reading in between the lines, and they need to speak for themselves, but we could take that action.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, who's the next work group member? Kevin.
Yeah, hello, I'm Kevin Ruse. Nice to see you all, I'm happy to be here today.
Yeah, here you are.
Okay, I'm sorry, is that better?
You're too tall.
I'll lean in a little bit, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I think Nancy has covered pretty much a lot of the things that needed to be said here today. A couple of things I did want to mention, I had the chance to see just this week, the movie which most of you have probably seen, which is Don't Pave Main Street. I saw the long version of it, this is about the history of Carmel. It tracks pretty closely to what I read in a book called Creating Carmel, which describes our history. And I do want to say, I mean, I've sort of been, you know, someone was joking with me the other day, they say, well, everybody's going to love you, or you're going to get lynched. And I know, I realize and recognize this is a very sensitive topic, and I also recognize, and... And I also recognize that there is a sense of loss and grief here in losing something that's important to this community and that has value. So I just think that's an important contextual background. And Carmel has always been a city of traditions, but it has, you know, we did pave Main Street. And it's just time. I also want to point out that four inches isn't very big, okay? This is Maria's iPhone 12 mini, okay? This is a size you can no longer get. This is five inches tall. So the numbers we're talking about are not very big. And I would encourage, I also would agree with Nancy, that, yeah, the more numbers we have up, the better. It's kind of like herd immunity, you know? So I think once you have a number, you should put it on your house. And I don't know, that's pretty much what I have to say. I appreciate the council taking the time to review this this year. I do want to give a big shout out to Bob for hurting a group of people who didn't always agree on everything, but did agree on which light at the end of the tunnel we were headed towards. So, anyway, thank you all. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the scheme.
Thank you for your incredible efforts, it's really amazing.
Okay.
Paula.
I'm Paula, and I came to the group a little bit late, but thank you, Bob, for including me. For anyone who was doubtful about this, I spent 18 and a half years on the city council. I've not really ever seen a group that was quite like this. Nancy asked every question imaginable, really to the point where we didn't want to hear that question anymore, but thankfully she did. And she kept us on track. Kevin did an unbelievable job with the map. So my family's been here forever. If anybody would get it about traditions, charm, character, it would be me. This is so far overdue. We just have to move forward with this. So I hope it does move forward and I would like to be, continue to be a part of it, but I'm very, very honored to have been able to participate in the way I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Anybody else? Nobody else here?
Well, that's it for the group.
No, no, your group is, that's the end of the group. All right. So anybody else from the public want to make a comment tonight?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who is involved. And Betty Maruto also asked me to extend my thanks. I thought I spent a lot of time on this issue. I did not spend six months once a week, which I'm glad I didn't have to participate, but I support the resolution. And again, thanks everyone for your hard work.
Thank you. And sorry, Betty, that we went to dinner and you had to go home because she was here.
I too support the resolution and I just want to thank this committee for your thoroughness, your openness, your willing to change your mind, and all the work that you did. I think it's fantastic. I do want to tell you really something funny, though. I have lost money because I haven't had an address in several ways. I couldn't get my car insurance changed, I couldn't buy a computer because of a snafu with the credit card. But the final insult is today. I got a free watch from Xfinity because I'm a Diamond member after all these years and they would only ship it to the address on the account, which is three space 12 Hennepin. So I just got tonight, the delivery, oh, we were unable to obtain a correct address for the receiver package. It will be returned to the sender. One more, just one more little ding there. But thank you so much. Health and safety was my first motivation when I started working on this project. And not only the health and safety of all of our residents because we have an aging community and we're more inclined to need some deliveries and so on, but also the stress on our first responders. They really want to get to us as fast as possible. And I knew, I knew that those figures just weren't all correct. So thank you for unburying that, so to speak, and really putting it out there for the public. And I'm so appreciative that the police department and the fire department have voiced their support for this because they go out all the time to make us as safe as possible and this will make it easier for them to get there faster. So thank you, thank you, thank you to every member of the committee. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your pioneering efforts.
I'm Jerry Muti, I'm the new guy, five years only here. I've watched a lot of public service on behalf of the residents here by people like the city council, the various groups, and for Bob and Paula and Kevin and the whole group. What's wonderful this time is not only was lots of effort put in and it was civil and it was curious and it was empathetic and it was pragmatic and it worked, we hope. It's brought it to a, not just a logical conclusion, but a well-researched, well-defended, and implementable. So on behalf of the other 2,800 residents, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Hi, Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Overton. I only have a couple of quick things to say because I've already spoken that I'm in favor of addresses for the health and safety, et cetera. What I did want to mention is a lot of the people who are opposed to having the addresses, they keep saying it's going to take away from the charm of Carmel. Well, I agree with Nancy Toomey that for those of us who have names, and I think it adds a lot to the charm and we ought to make sure that we maintain those names. The only other thing I have to say is, well, first of all, thank you very much to the council and to the committee for all that hard work. And if it's true that Kevin Ruse walked all these streets, I think we owe him a new pair of shoes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for a totally professional assessment. I attended a meeting in August and I thought it was a total breakthrough in terms of how you all looked at it and presented all of the information and that you took that feedback civilly and in such an organized way. I'm obviously definitely supportive of this. One thing that I would encourage you to put extra time into is your communications plan because, of course, this will be confusing to people. I know you can do workshops, but when you think it's three or six months, you might even need to think longer because it's been my experience of 40 years of communications and branding work on all kinds of different things, that it always takes at least three extra months to introduce what is known as like a new product. And this is, in fact, a new product for our community. But thank you, truly outstanding effort.
Thank you.
Hello, council, and I'd love to be the last one saying something about this. In general, my approach is safety and health and if anyone in my community needs it and I can make a difference in their lives by having addresses, by having a three-digit number or a four-digit number with no street name on it, I will give it to anybody because if it brings them health and safety and improves their lives, I am not going to take away that from them. So I'll ask you to think about it. I am all for the resolution and I have to admit, I am impressed of the work of this team, how cohesive they were, how effective they were, and the efficiency of the outcome. So I appreciate you, Bob, and all the work you did with the team because it's amazing. So I will just say, let's move on with more important items, let's go forward. I will say, let's go forward with the resolution, is my approach. Thank you.
Thank you. How many more people are going to speak? Let's, Hugo, are you the last one?
You brought me to be the last one?
No, I'm just, whoever's going to talk, get up here because I might start limiting the time. If we've got another 10, 12 people because we're running out of time tonight. All right, two minutes.
Fine, I'm going to be short and simple. Connie Irish has. And I too would like to thank the committee. You did an excellent job, everything was very clear and precise. These are the facts. Number one, it's a legal requirement. Number two, it takes longer to respond to emergencies in Carmel because of our location addresses. This can have very serious consequences. Number three, the post office is not going to close. For these three reasons, I implore you to vote for numbers on our houses that can be verified. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice of you.
I don't have anything new to add, I just want to thank you guys, the whole committee, for such a substantive, thoughtful report, all the work you did. It truly makes me proud to live here that there's people like you guys in the community. And so I hope you'll vote for the resolution to implement addresses.
It's very nice of you, thanks.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Hugo Folito. You know, one definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. I've been coming to the city council, I don't know how many times, begging for and asking for addresses. So it appears maybe that I wasn't insane after all. Thank you very much.
We'll hold judgment, Hugo. Hi.
Hi, Lorna Clarebault. I just want to say I feel so happy to be part of this community of people like you working so hard for us as a community. Thank you for all your hard work.
That's wonderful, thank you. Hi there.
Hey. I guess I'll be that guy, I'm probably the only one here, so I might get booed and hissed, but I don't like the idea of addresses, I don't want them. I know there's a lot of good reasons to have them and I do appreciate the research that's been done. Obviously, there's data behind, you know, your findings, but I don't care for that, I just, I don't, I don't think, I think there are other ways to, you know, get around the health stuff and the ambulance stuff and things like that, you know, that's been working all this time. I just don't think I'm for it. Sorry, please don't boo me.
Appreciate your comment, thank you. Anybody online? Three online, Cindy?
Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mayor Byrne, members of the council, my name is Cindy Lloyd. I was very heartened to hear that Kevin not only walked all of Carmel, but that he watched Don't Pave Main Street and he read Creating Carmel. My mother filmed on Don't Pave Main Street and she proofread every word of the book, Creating Carmel. When Harold Gilliam wrote it, he brought every chapter down to her to proofread before he published it. Unfortunately, she died before it published. But at any rate, what I really want to say is that, Dale, you asked me one time in a council meeting if I was for or against street addresses and I said, it's up to you. And I will still say the same thing. However, I will say, at this point, I am for them. I am glad they're not going to be five numbers long, but I am really completely impressed with Bob's summation of the work by this group and Nancy's too, Paula and the whole group. I did not go to any of the workshops. I had a belief that this needed to be worked through by the current council at the current time and didn't need an old timer saying, we don't need to change traditions because sometimes we do. And it will just be a new era in Carmel, but it won't change the charm of Carmel, whatever that is. And it won't change the beach and it won't change the memorial arch and it won't change the medians down Ocean Avenue. What it will do is help people find houses when they need to find them. So thank you very much for all the effort. I appreciate it so very much.
We appreciate you, Cindy, and I agree with you that Creating Carmel is a wonderful book and everybody should read it.
Nathan, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Byrne, city council. Thank you so much for letting me speak this evening. Full disclosure, Kevin did ask me to speak and I really don't need to at this point, but I prepared something, so I'm going to anyway. So thank you for letting me address and thank you so much to the committee for all their time and hard work. What an amazing six months, they put in, impressive. My name is Nathan Smith and I own Seabatical. Now, does everyone know where that is? How about if I had a medical emergency? Could you come help me? It's on the northeast corner or zero NE Taurus and First or three southwest of Santa Fe and First. How about now, could you find me? What about at night? It's the White House with black trim and the very new non-black black metal roof. Can you find it now? Maybe that was enough of a description, but it has taken almost half of my time to tell you where my house is. What if you had to locate a fire hydrant in front of my home? I have one. To save another house halfway down the block that was on fire? Could you find the hydrant based on what is described above? The water in the fire engine is only going, is going to run out in three minutes. You better know exactly which house that hydrant is at. I'm just going to throw it out there, but wouldn't 12 Taurus Street or something similar be way easier? For those who don't know me, I am a fire captain and paramedic in the Bay Area and I always joke that there are two things firefighters dislike equally, the way things are and change. My guess is that our little town has similar tastes, especially when it comes to this topic. But I am sorry to the folks that may lean towards the thing staying the same side, it is time to change now. I take my crews to emergencies every day and ensure their services are rendered to the cities we serve. Council, please allow Monterey Fire to do the same for our community. As civil servants, I feel it is our duty to make our community safer. It is time for you to get Carmel-by-the-Sea addresses. It is the state fire code after all. Let's no longer break the law. None of you here would dream of going to sleep tonight without a working smoke and CO detector in your homes, at least I hope you wouldn't. Yet we went hundreds of years without enforcing that code. Let's not have tradition or keeping things the same get in the way of our safety with this one. It is time now for addresses in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. You got some applause.
Dan, go ahead.
Dan Z, you're up.
Oh, sorry, sorry, it was on, hopefully you can hear me now.
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks, fine. Thank you, I appreciate everybody who put in all the effort, they did a tremendous job in gathering all sorts of information and presenting it. That was truly remarkable. Just a couple of points. One is that, you know, when I did some online searches, the first responder response times for Carmel are better than Monterey, Seaside, Marina, Sound City, Pacific Grove. It's not the same response time, so it doesn't seem like we're in a dangerous situation and we've been here for a long time. That's one thing, but more importantly, I kind of want to bring up the idea, we should think about potential unintended consequences. Consequences like when they ban plastic bags, the bagman manufacturers just made bigger thickly bags and caused a bigger problem. So what kind of potential consequences might we come across when, if we implement numbers? The post office has said they won't change, they're not going to, they're going to keep the post office in the PO box system, but we know the post office is always under financial stress and looking to do ways to save money. And Carmel-by-the-Sea is a very small, it's a one-square-mile area, a lot of homes all close together. It would be easy to cover with just one or two letter carriers, I imagine. And over, and over the years, it would be easy for them to decide, well, you know, hey, we don't have to have the post office, it'd be more cost-effective to just have two letter carriers than maintain the building. So if the lease is out, maybe they decide to close it and say, well, you know, hey, since there's street numbers everywhere, either, everybody either puts up boxes or they have to go find some other way, they have another PO box. The other potential consequence was that putting numbers on houses, aesthetically, it's not a big deal, but Carmel is very dark at night and having numbers on houses isn't going to help anybody find anything because they're not going to see them. So how do we deal with that? And there's no curb, so you can't paint on the curb, so there's issues there. I'm wondering about our street signs, we've got the nice quaint vertical street signs. Are they, are they legal? Are we going to find out a problem with that? I did a little search online and there's a municipality code that makes it sound like vertical signs don't need that and that it's not necessarily illegal, but I, you know, I don't know. So I just kind of think, we should think about what potential consequences there are because maybe the trade-off of if we do end up losing the post office in five years, is that bad? How bad is that?
Dan, your time's up, but I want to thank you for your thoughtful email and I'm sure Emily will take all those things into account when she starts putting the plan together.
I don't know. So I just kind of think, we should think about what potential consequences there are because maybe the trade-off of if we do end up losing the post office in five years, is that bad? How bad is that?
Dan, your time's up, but I want to thank you for your thoughtful email, and I'm sure Emily will take all those things into account when she starts putting the plan together should this pass. Appreciate it. All right. I think we're done with public comments. We're going to come back to council. Does anybody got another one?
Just go. I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I know Mr. Delves mentioned Emily's work, and she was right there with you the whole time, so I just, on behalf of the team.
We were going to have a big surprise for that later.
All right.
Emily.
Why don't you come up, Emily? So everybody can see you. That's a very good point.
So we've had one consistent person in this, and I'm, you know, this has sort of become celebratory, and nobody's decided anything yet. But I'm personally celebrating the conclusion of a very satisfying process, and that process would not have been possible without Emily. She's been doing this for years, and often alone. And I think when the committee came together, all of us just were sort of delighted to have the stability that you brought to this and the integrative thought, the way you challenged us, and the way you kept us on schedule and on target. And I think on behalf of everybody here, we really thank you.
It's been my pleasure. It really has, you know, I think. This was, this is proof of how the city and staff and the residents can look, can work in collaboration, and I think it just shows how successful we can be. Again, coming in with different thoughts and different ideas, and I'm really proud of the work that we did. And, you know, besides myself, you know, I want to thank Brian. He, you know, he's, we had questions for him. He answered our emails. He wrote things up. His legal analysis was right on point for us. You know, the chief, Anna Jeanette, our planning director, she attended a lot of our meetings. You know, she, she's a planner. You know, she, she answered questions that we had, you know, over at Public Works. Rob Culver really helped us build that network of folks that we needed to contact to get the right teams in the rooms or the virtual rooms where we had the meetings. So that's all I've got to say. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. All right. So we're bringing it back to the council for discussion. Does anybody have anything to say? You can go first.
Thank you, mayor. So, as most of you know, I always tend to be on the side of wanting to preserve and protect tradition and things that make our village unique and contribute to its longstanding character and charm. But in this issue, that's not enough of an argument. We're up against the state and state mandated codes, and we as a city have to comply with those. That includes building code, fire code, and things for health and safety. And the state doesn't give us a choice, and frankly, state law prevails over our municipal codes. The key words in this are the address identification system. We are giving numbers to houses. Each house will have a number to identify it. I do realize there are those who want to keep our traditional system, and we can continue to use directional addresses, at least for a while now, especially if that works for you. For example, if you have Carmel Drugstore that regularly does home deliveries for you, they certainly know your directional address, and I also certainly encourage us to use our home names as well. I was not on board with this with the last council, frankly, because I had many questions about how the address system would be implemented, and I was worried about the chaos that it could potentially create because we weren't given all the answers that we needed. But over these past six months, this citizens' work group reassured me. They did the work, they answered my questions, and they set about an orderly, methodical, sorry, and logical path forward, and I'm appreciative for all of the work that went into that. Furthermore, I was also concerned and worried that much of the burden would fall on homeowners and business owners to make the changes, and it could potentially cause a lot of frustration and confusion and anxiety. But as it turns out, what we've learned is that the city and the county will be doing much of this, and much of the work will be done by them, as we saw utilities, the county assessor, property taxes, voter rolls, all of that. And basically, as we also learned, you will just be responsible for choosing the time when you update individual things, your driver's license, individual bank accounts, your alarm, insurance, that kind of thing. So while I hope that we could find a middle ground in some form of a compromise to keep our traditional system, the reality is that we can't, and we have to adopt the house numbers and follow the state mandates, and I just want to thank the working group once again for all of their time to get us to this point, and I am on board.
Thank you, Alessandra. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you, Bob, and Kevin, and Paula, and.
Nancy.
Nancy. How could I forget Nancy for all the work, for all the work that you put in? Obviously, I'll support this. I've been speaking about this for a lot of time. I do have a couple of comments. I asked, I asked earlier where you were in the project plan, where you were in this five-step program, and I do think, I appreciate, well, I appreciate all the work that Kevin did, and I suspect that that is the numbering system that, you know, I, I kind of suspect that that's the numbering system we will adopt. I think that that one part of this program needs to go back out for public comment more than is here. So I think that we should, I think that the community should have at least one hearing just dedicated to the address system itself. You know, when you started, when you started, when we started this program six months ago, you, it was stated that you wouldn't make any decisions, and that sounds like a decision that has been made, and I would like to back that up half a step and just make sure that that's the right decision, because once that one decision is made, that's the decision that's impossible to fix. So I think that there's a little, there's time for a little bit of caution in terms of the actual assignment of the house numbers. I think that your example, I think you gave a perfect example of, of why that is, houses on corners. I would like to be absolutely sure that we do, we do that bit correctly. My street, for example, which you spoke about between Second and Fourth, we actually do have a Third Avenue. It's called Jane Powers, Jane Powers, which is a substitute for Third that everybody uses. So I would like to make sure that all those kinks are ironed out before we get to the next part of assigning numbers, assigning actual numbers to houses. I think that, you know, I'm kind of torn on the next thing I'll say. I think that, you know, as part of, you know, Laura Bowling talked about communications plans, and I think that, you know, we need to do some outreach to everybody that owns a piece of property in town at two points. First, either before or during the, before or during the, the part of the process that we actually assign numbers. So, you know, Jeff Barron, you live on Comino Real, and your address, you know, your tentative address is going to be 230 Comino Real. I think everyone in town deserves a postcard. Every property owner in town, at least in the residential area, deserves a postcard to the address of the property owner that we can get from, we can get from the tax rolls so that they know, you know, before we press the go, we're going with this system. I think everybody should be aware that this is the address that we're going to assign to your house. And I don't know how that works with the, I don't know how that works with the process I just described about sort of doing community outreach with respect to a numbering system. But I think that those two things need to happen. So we need to tell everybody that this is the number that you're going to be assigned before we assign them the number. You know, I know, you know, it's better to deal with, deal with the issues that we have, and we don't know that there are issues, better to deal with the issues we have before we press the button because they're going to be an awful lot more difficult to, to, to deal with after we press the button, and I know that we'll press the button. My other two comments are, one, there's a thing in Step Four called the Elections Office, and, you know, everything else, all the other things that you talked about, the utility companies, and they all know about our addresses. Like, they have some internal system where they know what our address is, like, you know. I've seen my Comcast address, and it's completely indecipherable to anybody except Comcast, but they know what it is. The Elections Office does not. And so I think there's some extra care and feeding that needs to go into sort of coordination, and this is, I guess this is for you, for staff. I think there's some extra care and feeding that needs to go into the part of the project plan that deals with updating voter records. And I think this is especially true because we're in November, and there's an election 13 months from now, and if Laura's right, and this process goes for six months and not, not three months, then we're in, you know, June or July of next year, and the election starts in June or July because people fill out, you know, as we all know up here, people fill out nomination papers, and you have to put your address on it. So at some point, we have to deal with, we have to talk to, we have to talk to the Elections Office and make sure that that is all squared away by the beginning of the summer, and I think that that's really important. That's really important to happen. So that's a no for Emily. And then finally, on the distribution list, there's planning, and it says here, planning and building, and there's a lot of work to do there. You know, you described a lot of, you know, you described a lot of work that needs to be done in terms of what you might do in coordinating, coordinating with, you know, credit card companies and financial companies and all the cable TV providers and all that. And I think everybody in the community needs to know that. So I think it's really imperative that after we do that first mailing with everybody's address, we do a second mailing. This is your address, and this is how we, the city, are going to help you, help you make the transition, or this is what you need, this is what we're going to do, and this is what we suggest you do in terms of accommodating, in terms of accommodating this new address. So again, those comments, take them for what you will. Very nice job, and congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff. Hans?
Yeah, I'll pile on and thank the group as well. You know, I really, it just shows what these citizens groups, you know, can do. I think it's an amazing model. Jeff, I think there were some good nuggets, you know, in your comments as well, so thank you. You know, I, I appreciated Kevin's comments, sort of about not spiking the football. You know, I think there are, you know, it's a minority, but there are a segment of folks in the community that do feel, you know, a sense of loss, and I've said it so many times that you guys are going to get sick of me saying it, but I grew up in a place that was incorporated in 1671, so tradition, you know, is important to me. And I know that, you know, a hallmark of Carmel from the very beginning has been a tendency to cut against the grain. You know, we've never felt a need to do things a certain way just because that's how they're doing it in other places. You know, from the very beginning, right around the turn of the century, they were paving paradise to put up a parking lot, and Devendorf nestled this village into the forest. You know, we had a wave of strip development hit California in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, and thankfully, you know, Carmel bucked the trend. You know, we've got streets that in most other places have kind of a cookie cutter conformity, but here, they retain this kind of rustic charm with this unfinished street edge and these idiosyncratic trees. And I think all of these things are things that make Carmel Carmel. And for many in our community, like, our, our lack of addresses is an important part of that tradition. And I actually don't disagree, and I think it's okay to be in favor of addresses and also recognize that there is some charm value. And if it were just a question of, you know, Amazon packages, it would be one thing, but as we've learned from our chief of police, from our fire department, from our residents, and most recently from, you know, Bob's citizens' group, it's also about public safety. And I told you the story, when I first moved to town nine years ago, my wife collapsed on the floor of our kitchen, wasn't breathing, and I just, I'd moved, you know, a month before, and I just couldn't remember the Carmel address. We've heard from Chief Tomasi and Chief Trier that not having an address adds 30 seconds to three minutes to every 911 call. And we've heard stories of residents, one who I see here sitting tonight, leaving the bedside of their stricken spouse to run into the street to flag down, you know, an ambulance crew that's trying to count houses in the dark. It's also become apparent that the services and systems that we use every day are increasingly incompatible with our current system, you know, and it, it just kind of turns these normal chores, like getting insurance or creating a business entity or, you know, registering for a real ID into, you know, a time-sucking odyssey of frustration. And so for most people in town, again, I'd say, I think it's at least 70%, most people have come to the conclusion that it's just no longer worth it. And I think that the number has continued to grow as the public safety trade-offs have come into sharper focus. So it's not something that I do lightly, but it's an idea whose time has come, and it's a change that's supported by a supermajority of residents. And so for all those reasons, I will be voting in support of the resolution.
Well said.
I've talked, talked a lot. All I can say is, I didn't, I entered into this really just wanting more information, but also kind of with the intent of proving absolutely that the current system wouldn't work. And, you know, that was one of the biggest ah-hahs for me, just, well, it just won't. And that's really, you know, if there was a transformative moment for me along with the response times, that was kind of it, and I certainly did get transformed in the, in the process into just thinking, we need to do this. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm looking for a motion. You're going to make me do it? Jeff, I think of all the people, I think you should be the one to start this.
Yeah, now I'm looking for the words that are in the packet. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025-087 to begin implementation of an address identification, an address identification program in the city through a comprehensive street address program.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Jammal?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have to move on. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Are you all going to stay? All right. Now's the time to leave because we're going to, we've got some important things to talk about. We've got to get going. The second order of business is resolution 2025-088, adopting an amended water allocation policy for the city of Carmel-by-the-Sea. Guys?
Sergeant.
Maria. The mayor isn't happy. Thanks. Thanks, Brandon. All right. We're going to be talking about water allocation policy. This is obviously a very exciting item that has been a long time coming as well. So let's hear the staff report. Who's going to present that one?
Marnie.
Marnie, you're here.
I'm here.
Welcome.
I'm ready.
All right. We are two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's give her two minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
What? I have 29 slides.
Keep it short and sweet. You have how many?
29.
Really? Can you make, can you shorten it up?
It's like 10 seconds per slide.
So I'm here to talk about the water management program and the allocation of water resources. We'll see how fast I can talk. There we go. Okay. So these are the topics that I'm going to cover this evening. I won't read them off. I'll just dive right. I won't read them off, I'll just dive right in. The first one is our Water Management Program, which is in our municipal code, it's chapter seventeen fifty. The program was adopted back in nineteen eighty-seven and was amended in nineteen ninety-three. It's now codified in the municipal code as chapter seventeen fifty. So our water resources are allocated based on policies in our general plan, as well as our local coastal program. And the process by which water is allocated is through the city council adopting a resolution after receiving a recommendation by the Planning Commission. According to the Water Management Program, each resolution must identify the quantity of water available, the land use categories that will receive water, the amount of water allocated to each category, and the amount of water that will remain in the unallocated reserve. The Water Management Program requires that ten percent of the available water resources be reserved for affordable housing, and also that water must be prioritized for coastal recreation access and essential public services. So our water allocation balances that were adopted back in twenty thirteen, this was the last resolution that staff could locate. So these were the nine categories. There's actually eight because category number eight was not defined. And these were the water balances in each category. So these are defined in acre-feet, that's what the AF is. So this was the last resolution that the council adopted. Earlier this year, as you're aware, the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District adopted an ordinance that allocated fourteen acre-feet of water to the city of Carmel. That ordinance became effective on March first, and that water is coming to us as a result of the expansion of the Pure Water Monterey Project. That project is projected to be complete by the end of this year. Also, I just want to emphasize and reemphasize that the district is allocating the water to the city. The city is then allocating that water to projects. The city is not selling the water, and the recipients of the water cannot turn around and sell that water either. So there's no selling of water at all. We still are under the cease and desist order, so a property must have an existing service connection to receive a water allocation. We talked before, the Water Allocation Ordinance requires that any water that we receive from the district automatically goes into the unallocated category until the city council adopts a resolution dispersing it into specific land use categories. Staff was before the council on May fifth, discussing the, the fourteen acre-feet that was allocated. The council had expressed a desire to move three acre-feet into the low and very low-income category. Staff was, staff needed to return with a resolution for the council to adopt to move that acre-feet, that three acre-feet, but needed to go to the Planning Commission first to get their recommendation in accordance with our Water Management Program. So that is what we did. Before I get to that, though, I do want to just mention that since twenty thirteen, there were some changes to the, the water allocation balances. So this chart kind of reflects some of those changes before we get into what the Planning Commission recommended. The commercial category did end up zeroing out. So as of today, this is what the allocation looks like if the council chose to do nothing. So the fourteen acre-feet is in the unallocated reserve. The forest cottages, that, that has been moved back to category one. So this is an accurate picture of what our, what our allocations look like today. Okay, really briefly, I'm just going to touch on a couple general plan policies. So policy P one one sixteen talks about where existing public services, including water, can only accommodate a limited amount of new development. Priority uses, including essential public services, public recreation, commercial recreation, and visitors-serving land uses, shall not be precluded by services to other development. So these are a couple policies that guide the decisions on how to allocate water. Policy P one one twenty-five also talks about prohibiting new subdivisions until water supplies are available to all existing subdivided parcels. Moving into the housing element, we do have an adopted six-cycle housing element. Program one point two point A talks about water distribution prioritization for affordable housing. So again, prioritizing water for affordable units, which just is consistent with what our Water Management Program also supports. The program goes on to say that the city will grant water allocation priority to projects that assist the city in meeting its share of the regional housing need. And then again, that's the section of the Water Management Program that talks about reserving at least ten percent of the water for affordable housing, and also considering the general plan and local coastal plan policies. All right, so this chart was prepared by the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District, so you may have seen this before. I think it was prepared back in twenty twenty-three. I just wanted to share this for context. Again, we're talking about fourteen acre-feet of water that's been allocated to the city. Just looking at the bottom line there, a one-bedroom apartment requires point zero six eight acre-feet of water. A two-bathroom, hopefully I said bathroom, one-bathroom apartment, two-bathroom apartment is point one 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 acre-feet. And then you can see a single-family home with a primary bath, standard bath, and half-bath requires point one eight zero acre-feet. So these are the typical water requirements for residential water use. Staff did a little bit of math, which is always dangerous. And so this table shows what our regional housing needs allocation is. So you see the breakdown by income level. With just a fifty-fifty split of one bathroom, two bathroom, gives us kind of an estimate of the amount of acre-feet of water by very low, low, moderate income units. So it gives us a sense of how much water we might need to meet our regional housing needs allocation. Just please note, in the above moderate category, I actually had my, my numbers flipped there. So it's a two-bath at seventy-five percent, one-bath at twenty-five. In any event, these are just estimates, just to kind of give us an idea. The caveat to all of this is that, you know, Carmel is built out, so every parcel's going to have some water on it to begin with, so we're not starting at zero. So while that total reflects thirty-two acre-feet, it's not going to be that much. I think that's kind of the good news. But this just kind of gives us a picture of what the need could be. And then also kind of looking at the council's desire to move the three acre-feet to the low and very low would give us a balance of three point six one six, and you can kind of compare that to those income categories. Staff went a step further. As we're working on housing element amendment and kind of retooling some of our strategies to see if we can sort of disperse our affordable housing throughout the, the community a little bit better, these are some of the strategies and, you know, where we estimate the units would go across each strategy, and then how that kind of totals out with the water. And you can see it's even a little bit less at thirty acre-feet. Same caveat, all of these parcels have water already on them, so it, it would need, you know, even less than that. But again, just kind of gives us a picture of, of what we're looking at for, for each potential revised program. Also wanted to just kind of talk a little bit about how water is calculated for commercial uses, because it is different from residential. So hotels, you know, the water is based on the number of rooms, the factor is point zero six four acre-feet per room. For restaurants, it's based on the number of seats. And then you can see like for the specialty restaurant, it's based on square footage. So it does, it does kind of vary. So these are just some of the, some different examples there. Also wanted to mention municipal because we do have a couple of projects that are kind of out there, so just wanted to kind of bring those up and just see, you know, if we needed to kind of think about how much we wanted to put in the municipal bucket. It doesn't look like we need a whole lot. We have the Piccadilly Park restroom expansion of one toilet. We have plenty of water in that, in that bucket for that project. The library's not going to, it doesn't look like they're going to need any additional water allocation. The police department project probably won't need any additional water either. We can certainly keep an eye on both of those projects, but as far as the municipal bucket goes, it looks like there's probably, you know, adequate water in there as it stands So next up, I wanted to talk a little bit about the water allocation process. So this is after the council adopts a resolution and the water is in the buckets, kind of what happens at that point. So at the Community Planning and Building Department, someone comes in, submits a development application. Staff is going to look at that application to determine whether or not, on its own, there's sufficient water for that project. If there's no net increase, staff is going to accept that application and start processing it. If the project requires additional water and none is available, the code actually requires that that application be returned to the applicant, so we cannot accept it, we cannot process it. The only exception is for projects that include affordable housing. If the project requires additional water and water is available, then a pre-commitment is temporarily assigned while that application is processed. So we're basically reserving water for it while it goes through the process. The water is not officially allocated until the building permit is issued and the water permit is issued by the district. Community Planning and Building is responsible for maintaining records of our water balances in the different categories. And our Water Management Program says that the Planning Commission should be reviewing, reviewing it annually. So, Planning Commission reviewed the fourteen acre-foot allocation. We walked them through all of this information as well at their September tenth meeting. They did adopt a resolution with a recommendation to the council. Their recommendation is to allocate all of the water. They support placing three acre-feet in the low and very low-income housing category. They do recommend combining the single-family and multifamily into one residential category. And staff has drafted a new description to reflect that. They also recommend placing six acre-feet in that category, two acre-feet in the commercial, and three acre-feet in the municipal. The Planning Commission also expressed their support for continued retrofitting of fixtures, so having property owners use the most efficient fixtures to try to conserve as much water. They also support the annual review of activity in each allocation category and making, you know, any necessary adjustments. And then there's some cleanup items as well that they, that they also supported. Couple of policy questions that we wanted to put before the council this evening, specific to ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units. Would just like to know if you'd want to put a specific amount of water aside for those that is separate from the residential category? So, for example, if you put six acre-feet in the residential, do you want to pull one acre-foot, two acre-feet aside for accessory dwelling units? When we posed this question to the Planning Commission, they indicated that they didn't think it was necessary to separate it out. They thought just having it all in one bucket was fine. Also, just looking for the council's direction too on the retrofitting of fixtures to the most efficient fixtures before a property owner requests a water allocation. And part of the reason for asking this question too is a homeowner may come in and they might want to do a half-bath, and that may be the extent of their project. And so is it going to be our policy that they go through their entire home and retrofit all of their fixtures first to try to be as, as efficient as possible before we allocate them water? So just looking for some guidance on that. Also, which category should mixed-income projects receive an allocation from? And this is really coming out of our housing element, which encourages mixed-income projects. So if you've got market rate, market rate units and you've got affordable units, which, you know, which category should we pull from? Should it just be the residential category? Should it be the affordable category? If you have any thoughts on that, that would be great. And then also for the, the hotel-to-residential, the Transfer of Development Rights Program, the water is going to stay on the hotel site that converts to residential. The keys would go to another site that's a commercial. So where do we want that water to come from? Do we want that to come from the commercial bucket, the residential bucket? So if you have any guidance on that, that would be helpful as well. And I suppose we could always revisit some of these things later if we needed to. So with that, staff is recommending that you find that adopting this resolution to allocate the water resource, as it's not a project under SEQA, and that you adopt the resolution, adopting an amended water allocation as recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, Marnie. Anybody have any questions? Go ahead. Try to make them quick if you can.
I have three questions. On slide number eleven, P one one twenty-five is prohibit new subdivisions requiring additional water resources. Do we have new subdivisions or what, what properties in the city, or what projects or whatever qualify as new subdivisions?
So we don't have any subdivisions right now, because in part, if you don't have two meters, you can't subdivide anyways. So it's, it's not possible.
So, so for example, let me, so the Carmel Resort Inn up on Guadalupe, up, up there, how many meters do they have?
I don't know.
They had a lot.
Do they?
Sixteen?
Yeah.
So the whole property, the property takes up like three-quarters of a block, right, between second and third, or third and fourth in Guadalupe and Carpenter? So of the sixteen units, however many units there are up there, they're only six meters?
Many, many of those cottages were originally single-family homes. So if there is a cottage on each lot, I know there's sixteen legal lots of record. If there is a cottage on each lot, then they do have sixteen meters, but I can't say that for certain.
Would that, so if that project came to us, would that be, so they... With that, so if that project came to us, would that be, so they wouldn't be allowed to put, so let's say the owners decided to put in sixteen houses, they just came in tomorrow with an application for sixteen applications, or whatever it is, for sixteen houses, would that be a subdivision under P one one twenty-five, or?
It would not, because those are already sixteen lots of records. Are you looking at Brandon?
I'm looking at Anna.
She's behind you, you can't see her.
No, I'm looking at Anna.
Okay, so no, those aren't, those are-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be disrespectful.
No, that's okay.
No.
Those are sixteen legal lots of records, so-
So no subdivision.
So no subdivision.
A subdivision would be like, we saw Ms. Hess here before, so a subdivision would be if she wanted to subdivide the property that her house was on, she has a big lot, or lower over it, that would be it, that's what a subdivision is? Okay. If a property owner comes to the city for an ADU, right now, I think you touched on this sort of late, late in the presentation, but right now, that ADU, they would get there, so I have a house, I decide I want to build an ADU on my property, that house, that ADU, with, with the categories that we have right now, that ADU would grab water, like I would be entitled to water out of the residential, so I should get my architect in line right now and come to city and, and I could just come get water for an ADU?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and I guess this is a question for you. So, you know, a couple, a month ago, or two months ago, Dave Stolt came to us and said that we should use all this water, because there's lots of it. And, you know, he's presumably delivering that same message to every community here, every, every community that is served by the water management district. And, you know, everything seems to be in a state of flux, you know, with respect to water. So we're trying to make a decision up here based on, you know, the information that we have here and sort of what he has said. And I'm looking for some counsel from you in terms of how we should evaluate, you know, his decision.
Yeah, so I, my answer would be, and the gentleman-
His statement, not his decision.
Pardon me?
His statement, not his decision. That there's lots of water.
Yeah, his statement was based on weighing the risks with Mr. Shudo. So Mr. Stolt's the general manager of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District set up by the legislature to regulate the investor-owned utility California American Water. And then the-
Is that the only thing they do? Is that their, like, no, it's not the only thing they do, but that-
No, they, they do a lot of things. They not just regulate the private, the investor-owned utility, they protect the natural resources on the Carmel River, and they make water allocations, they enter into water agreements, which is kind of the one that we're dealing with right here. And then we also have Mr. Shudo, who's the general manager of Monterey One Water, used to be called MRWPCA, Pollution Control Agency. And those two agencies work with Monterey County Water Resources Agency, and the gentleman who wrote you a letter today is in the gallery. And so, so, and he, he will likely speak, but what, what the two general managers on the Monterey Peninsula said is, we understand the inherent risks of allocating water, some of which had been previously pre-committed twenty-seven years ago to hold off seawater intrusion, and we understand that, and if there's the need to use Peninsula water resource, water resources instead of using Salinas Valley water resources, and those include wastewater from the city of Salinas and the surrounding area, what's called ditch water, Blanco ditch water, and then wash water from, from ag, when they wash the produce, that that was a risk willing that they were willing to take to make these allocations. So, I guess to answer your question, so I put my trust in Mr. Stolt, Mr. Shudo, that we have adequate water resources for us to accept this water allocation and then to distribute them to our residents and property owners.
So there's not a, so the objections from, from, from Salinas over here on one side, there's, is there a risk that someone else is gonna come in, like the CPUC or someone, and give some-
No.
-direction to the water management district that, oh, you're not doing this, and then we've allocated our water for one purpose and we haven't left ourselves enough water?
I think the punchline with that, with Ara's letter, and then, and then the letter that he wrote to Dave Stolt earlier this year in January, are that we should proceed with caution, and just with kind of wise, eyes wide open. And I, I think that that's what, again, Mr. Shudo and Mr. Stolt did, and that's my counsel and my answer to you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Hans?
I've got comments, but no questions.
Alessandra?
Yes, thanks, I've got two really, really quick questions. Marnie, thank you for your report. On page twenty-three, the planning commission recommendation, I was just wondering if you could tell us really quickly why they recommended combining the single family with the multifamily category? What was the reasoning behind that?
That's a good question. I, yeah, I, I didn't-
I didn't mean to stump you, I just don't know.
I don't recall there being a very specific reason other than not, not seeing a purpose and having a distinction. Just putting all the residential in one bucket.
Just to simplify, just keep it simple.
Because to me, they're different enough that you would keep them separate, so I was wondering if there was a something specific that they were thinking, but-
I don't remember them saying anything more specific.
Okay, let me move on to the next one. On page twenty-four of the presentation, so the planning commission recommends an annual review of activity in each category and making adjustments when needed. Will the council also be getting an annual review, so we can also keep track of everything that's going on?
We certainly can do that. We also can't make any adjustments without the council adopting a resolution, so.
Okay.
You would see that, yeah.
Thank you.
So what did the planning commission say about keeping ADUs separate, or making them separate?
They didn't think it was necessary.
Okay, and what about the high efficiency, high efficiency fixtures?
They support retrofitting, yeah, the continued retrofitting.
Okay, and what about the, the key program, commercial and residential?
I did not ask them that question.
Is it important for us to make that decision here, or do we have to?
We don't have to make that decision tonight.
Okay, all right.
But your thoughts would be helpful.
All right, public comment, please. Anybody have anything to say about this subject?
Good evening, council, my name's Ara Sharian, I'm the general manager for the Monterey County Water Resources Agency. I appreciate it's been a long day for you here, so I'll keep my, my remarks brief. To summarize, I agree with Mr. Ririg, I think the difference in perspective here regarding how cautiously we should move forward really does have to do with different perspectives about the level of risk that's being taken. What the water management district did not consider in their ordinance, or really in their planning process, was other work that's going on that relates to groundwater management. That's not only true in the northern part of Monterey County, but true throughout the county, different groundwater sustainability agencies are responsible for this work. And so, as was part of the earlier deliberation, there are state mandates that need to be met, and there are decisions that are being made about how to best meet them, and those decisions could involve the redirection and reprioritization of source supplies for Pure Water Monterey. And so, as was also part of the early deliberation, the need to be cautious when making irreversible decisions. If you allocate water and someone builds an ADU and that water supply then is redirected for other purposes, there's still an ADU. And so, when we think about where we are in terms of the timing of the planning piece of all of this, the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency is responsible to the state for updating their general, their groundwater sustainability plans by January of 2027, which in the scheme of things, when we think about how long it takes to do the permitting process, you know, design and so forth, really isn't that far away. You know, am I standing before you today and saying with absolute certainty that that water supply is gonna be used for other purposes? Absolutely not. But there's also no disagreement that it could be, just some think it's less likely than others, and some are approaching it from the perspective of, if that water's repurposed, then what's plan B? And so this is why I write, I, you know, Chip's summary is exactly right, we recognize your authority to allocate this water, we recognize the authority of the water management district, you know, to make it available, we're not, we're not questioning any of that, we're just raising this, you know, this caution flag to say that there is some time here, we appreciate all of the excitement around the Pure Water Monterey expansion, we are, you know, the primary supplier of water to that project, and therefore to the peninsula. And it's not a Salinas and peninsula thing, water from the city of Salinas comes to the peninsula through Pure Water Monterey through times of the year, and water from the peninsula goes to groundwater management in the northern Salinas Valley at times of year. So that water transfer is bidirectional, this is truly a regional project, and it's great, but I do caution about making irreversible- -literally called interruptible. So, thank you.
So, could I ask you a question?
Of course.
So what are you telling us to do?
I would, as I state in my letter, I recommend that you would wait until those groundwater sustainability plans are revised in January of twenty-seven, and then make a decision about allocating water. If you have some immediate needs that you can't fulfill with the existing allocation that is still on the city's books, then maybe grab a smaller piece of that. So if there is a redirection of that supply, the plan B problem is much smaller.
Great thing to find out at quarter to nine.
Yes. Well, we have been telling the story for a year now.
Okay, did our planning commission go through this whole thought process?
I don't think folks are generally thinking about that relationship. They're looking at the water that has been promised through Pure Water Monterey and its expansion, and they're really just leaving it at face value, and they're not thinking about how that water is sourced and the implications of the agreements that make that water available.
Did you go to their meeting?
The plant, no, I did not go to-
Because that's really where this decision was made, we're, we're just validating it and we have the power to vote on it, so.
Yeah.
It would have been nice for you to be there.
I agree, that would have been, I was unaware of it, like many, I learned about it in the pine cone, I was at the water management district meeting, and I've attended other meetings as well in terms of trying to share this perspective and this cautionary tale. Certainly wish that the water management district had focused more attention on it, but we are where we are. So my apologies for my-
It'd be nice to have Dave Stoltz here to sort of counterpoint this.
I, I think Chip described Dave's position well.
Stephanie's there, maybe I can ask her, she's got her hand up, so.
Okay.
She's gonna make a comment too.
Yeah.
All right, sorry to, sorry to go off track of the public comment process, but thank you for being here.
My pleasure, thank you for listening.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Nancy Toomey here. The, my guess, but don't know for a fact, on the benefit of keeping residential and multifamily in one bucket, it allows for expediting of issuing permits, should there be, if you keep them separate, then, and you run low in one of the categories, it, it just delays some of the actions that would be necessary to move through to successful permitting of, of projects. So that's my interpretation of why the benefit of, of keeping those in one bucket. I would strongly recommend, since all this is new, pending the new information that just came in, that you, if you choose to approve as recommended here by staff, that you request at least a consent agenda item to see the, the current consumption of the allocations on a more frequent basis, once a year. Because of the newness and the volatility that was discussed just before me, I think it is essential that you get a more frequent update. And then, you know, at some juncture, you move it to a lesser frequent interval, but to start with more frequent is a strong recommendation. And finally, just to state hopefully the obvious, harvesting water from the existing use within any residential property for any incremental use via the low-flow devices and appliances, et cetera, is, I think, a real critical thing that needs to continue to be reinforced, and I believe is in the standard operating procedure of the planning department now. So, my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else here, so let's go online.
Okay. Joey Levine, go ahead.
Yes, hi there, I'll try to make this quick, as I know it's late into the evening. I'm a newer resident and definitely excited to be more involved in the community. I know the conversation around water credits is decades old, but thought it might be helpful to offer a personal example, sort of of the impact of this decision that it certainly counters January 2027. So, again, new homeowner to Carmel by the sea, we have a house currently going through some renovations, it's been an eighteen-month construction project, and we're actually scheduled to wrap in about two months. So I know you're in the process of determining this, you know, the allocation process that were announced a year ago, but we're really hoping that you can move this forward for Carmel residents. I know in our specific case, we're just looking for one point three water credits, and we know there's a lot of folks that are in similar sort of situations as ours. Again, we know it's highly complex, we appreciate the careful consideration, we definitely don't want to be bypassing other requests or trying to get around anything, we're simply just sort of asking for approval, since, again, it's been eighteen months for our project, it's nearing its end, and, you know, the decision of this will have significant financial decisions, given construction and sort of, we're not allowed to do this. I wanted to just give one more piece of background, again, I know it's getting late into the evening, but just so you can see another real world example of how complex these things have become for homeowners. Shortly after we purchased our home in June of twenty-three, we had an unresolved permit that we discovered after closing from nineteen ninety-two. And so unbeknownst to us, the previous owners ended up installing an unpermitted bathroom, which we know many people did at the time. The permit was never signed by the city, and it was never recognized as legitimate. So being new homeowners, in good faith, we chose to quickly resolve this matter to align with city guidelines, wanted to be in good standing and love the community. Unfortunately, it did require applying our available credits to legalize that historic bathroom. It was, of course, disappointing to learn this information after we bought the house, because it did disrupt plans we had for updates and renovations and so forth. So, you know, given that the credits are hopefully expected to be distributed imminently, I understand there's some dissent in this meeting, we're simply just trying to avoid costly construction revisions with allowing of, you know, one point three water credits in our case, and I know there's many others that are sort of in similar small situations that are just trying, trying to really improve their homes, and this is a key part of that. So, again, we respect that you guys are managing many requests, and hopefully there's a path forward for folks sooner than January of twenty-seven. Thank you.
We'll see what we can do, Joey, thanks.
Stephanie Locke, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, I'm Stephanie Locke, and I'm here as the water demand manager of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. And I would like to thank Marnie for her quick and redacted presentation of the allocation process. The district's March first allocation to each jurisdiction is meant to be used in each of the various water use categories to allow the jurisdictions to make properties more livable and usable after years of limited supply. I've been working with water permits since nineteen eighty-eight, and I'd like to take a moment to give you some additional background on Carmel's water allocation process. The city's establishment of a water management plan, which was eighty-seven dash fourteen, was written and adopted under very different circumstances. In nineteen eighty-seven, the city's annual overall consumption of water was considered its allocation. That system was replaced in nineteen ninety. In nineteen ninety-three, when the water district released nineteen point four one acre feet of water for the newly developed Peralta Well and Seaside to the city of Carmel, the district enacted a permitting system that tracks new sources of water supply and debits that new supply as it is used for newer, expanded water uses through the district's permitting system. So it's kind of like a checking account. In the thirty-two years since that allocation was released, the city's account increased by almost two acre feet for transfers and cancellations of permits. Today, two point six six one acre feet or- Today, 2.661 acre-feet or over 10% of the 1993 allocation still remains and is not used. The use of water and the growth associated with it does not occur at breakneck speed. And in fact, it occurs much more slowly than anyone anticipates. My 37 years of experience permitting projects and managing water demand support that statement. For example, for about eight years, starting in 2015, city property owners were given the opportunity to buy water from Clint Eastwood's Malpasso Water Company. 163 Carmel-by-the-Sea properties purchased around 20 acre-feet of water. In the past 10 years, only about half of that has been used to build houses or remodel in the village. That other half is unused. As of March 1st, the city has 16 acre-feet of water in its allocation, including 2-plus acre-feet remaining from 1993. If more water is needed, the Water Management District has committed that additional water will be available. In fact, there are over 2,000 acre-feet of water unallocated in the district's reserve that can be released when a jurisdiction needs more water. And before I conclude tonight, I do want to say, in response to the policy questions, the district does require high-efficiency retrofits on all, on the site when a water permit is issued. So that, that would be a requirement. And the district's opinion regarding the comments by the Monterey County Water Resource Agency, the issues have been raised and discussed in various forums for over a year. And the two agencies that are closest to the issue, which are the district and Monterey One Water, have evaluated the risks and have built the project along with contracts and commitments with a high degree of confidence in the source waters. Beyond that, I do want to say that the Planning Commission's recommendation to combine the multifamily and single-family into one residential pot is just a benefit to anybody who wants to build. And finally, on the Carmel Resort Inn question, that is not a subdivision. There are multiple parcels on that property. Some of them do have meters and some don't. And so part of that project would be subject to the current moratorium on meters. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Very helpful.
Tasha Witt, go ahead.
Hi there.
You're up, Tasha. We can hear you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, you're muted now.
Can you unmute, Tasha? There you go.
Now can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you very much. By the way, thank you earlier for your work on the addresses. The other resident that called in about his building project is my neighbor and we often get each other's packages, so that's kind of funny. I just wanted to say that I would like to see that the water is released for residents, the small portion set aside. And it's recommended by your staff. It's recommended by the Water Management District, as you just heard from Stephanie Locke and all of her well-reasoned and the research work that they've done. Other cities have already released water to their residents in Monterey County that have been allotted their water. And also, we've had years of limited supply. And she said half of the unused 1993 water allocations by Clint Eastwood, the water credits there as well. So I'm really looking forward to you releasing some water so we can not be penalized, but actually have the water that's available. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tasha. Nice to hear from you. Okay, we had one more here? Nobody else online?
No.
Thanks for putting the timer up. Yeah.
I did make a comment about pickleball, but I was really here for ADU discussion. So, my name is David Amui. I've been a homeowner here for almost 20 years. I have a small little house. And I've upgraded my fixtures. And I have two water credits available to me. So I want to build an ADU on my property and I need three more credits. So it'd be great if you can vote on this today, release the water, so I can pay my architect all the money, the crazy money that they're asking and everybody else. But I really want to build that ADU on my property. So I appreciate the support from everybody here.
All right. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I think we're finished with public comment. All right, let's have a discussion. Let's start with Jeff and we'll go around.
Sure, I have a number of comments, so please bear with me. So my comments sort of are grounded in, in two areas. One, to, when I think about this, one is to make sure we reserve or figure out how to emphasize our housing element processes. You know, and I'm sure Hans will, Hans, the housing element expert, will talk about that in a minute and I'll talk some more about it in a second. And second, Ms. David, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name. It's okay. I was just, I'm just going to call you David, not out of disrespect. David talked about ADUs. And my second, my second principle is no water for ADUs that extend the floor area of the property past the limit, past 1,800 square feet. So I don't know, I don't know what David's, what David's situation is. So to use him as an example, if he has a 1,600-square-foot house and a 200-square-foot garage and he's at his 1,800 square feet, I would say no water for David. But if he's at 1,100 square feet and a 200-square-foot garage and he has 500 square feet, I would say water for David. And, and that sort of blends in, that sort of blends in with my, with the answers to these comments. You know, I do think that we should support, we should allocate water to people that need to add a bathroom to their house or do standard work that's within, what I would call sort of standard work, that's within the 1,800-square-foot limit or 1,600 or 1,800-square-foot limit of their house. I do not have, I do not have any problem with that. I do think, as I said before, that making, using the ADU, using this water in conjunction with the ADU mandate from the state to go past the 1,800-square-foot limit that we've all agreed on, you know, for 20 years, I'm pretty steadfastly opposed, pretty steadfastly opposed to, to that. I can go down the list of questions that we have been asked in the staff report, so the September meeting. I'll talk about the September, adopted resolution 2025-042-Pc. The Planning Commission supports placing 3 acre-feet in the low and very low-income housing category. I would say yes, and I think that that goes with my comments about, you know, my general comments about the housing element. They recommend combining single-family and multifamily into, into one residential category. I would say no. I'm not, I'm not convinced that that's right. I'm not convinced that that really comports with the housing element. And I believe, you know, I believe if we were to send staff back with something to sort of implement my, my suggested ADU restriction, that we would need to have a separate category. I would leave that to staff, I would leave that to staff. Oh, there you are. I would leave that to staff to figure out how to segregate ADU water from residential water that doesn't include ADUs so that we can prevent that, so that we can prevent that from happening. I'm, I'm pretty adamant about that. So you recommend placing 6 acre-feet, AD, the Planning Commission recommends 6 acre-feet in the residential category. I would say, sort of, I'm generally okay with that. You know, I heard, I know that we have a restriction on the water meters, so I wonder whether anybody will use it. But I do not want any of that water to be used for ADUs to go past whatever the legal limit of, whatever the, the prescribed limit on their lots is, which is, you know, 1,800 square feet for 4,000 square-foot lots and bigger for big, for bigger, for bigger lots. They recommend placing 2 acre-feet in the commercial category. And my answer to that is, maybe. I would like to see, you know, I would like to understand where, what the commercial category is before I sort of voted to put 2 acre-feet into it. You know, I was having, I had a conversation with Stephanie Locke today about what exactly goes into the water allocation, the commercial category. And so let's just use Mr. Pastor's building as an example. Mr. Pastor, you know, proposed some number of commercial units in the, in the downstairs of his, of his mixed-use building. And according to Ms. Locke, the restrooms that, the restrooms that accommodate the commercial space do not require water credits. Is that correct? Right, that's my understanding.
Yeah, so, so for retail.
Retail, let's talk about retail.
Yeah, so retail, it doesn't matter how many bathrooms you can have. It's all based on square footage.
Yeah.
So that was one of the attachments that Ms. Waffle would put. Some of the uses are specific to fixture counts and
To restaurants.
Pardon me?
To restaurants.
That's by seat, restaurant seat, not toilet seat.
Yeah. So my fear is that, my fear is that without hearing anything else, that putting 2 acre-feet in the commercial category is going to lead to a run on the number of restaurant seats we have in town. And I don't think that's, I'm not sure that that's a particularly good idea for the town. And I would like to understand that more before I open that floodgate. The Planning Commission also recommends placing 3 acre-feet in the municipal category. And I wonder why. We heard from Ms. Waffle that, we heard from Ms. Waffle that we're not sure that any of other municipal buildings require more feet. I can understand, you know, I can understand like leaving some water for future public restrooms like Piccadilly Park or some other, some other municipal uses. But I don't understand why we wouldn't just leave it in the unallocated category for the time being rather than, rather than move it to municipal. I would point out one thing also, that, there was a note, there were some comments from Ms. Locke about the Malpasso Water Company water and that, you know, half of that water, in fact, I know some people that have purchased that water and have not used it. And my question would be, what happens when one of those people comes to the city for, for a water credit? So if someone has purchased, you know, one house worth of, of water, you know, for, for, for one, you know, half an acre-foot or .4 acre-feet, whatever the lot was, and they come to the city and they want to add some, they want to add some fixtures to their house or they want to add a, you know, whatever, whatever it is they want to do, are we going to make them use the water that they've purchased first before they use the city's water? Like, I would like to understand what's going to happen, what's going to happen with that water. Should a specific amount of water be set aside for ADUs and junior ADUs that is separate from the larger residential category? You know, I just basically said what my answer to that question was, yes. And I think the number right now should be zero. I think we need to come, I think we need to come to terms with, with, you know, water. You know, we've, we've talked a lot in the past 20 years about using water as a growth mechanism. And here I am advocating using water as a growth mechanism. You know, this is the way that we have right now to restrict the proliferation of ADUs on our, already on our, on our built-out lots. And I think that, I think that we should use it. I think that, you know, ADUs have been a backdoor that people have been using to get away with building 2,400-square-foot houses instead of 1,600-square-foot houses. And I think this is the only thing we have that's stopping it. And, and I would be a pretty big no on that. Should, if 6 acre-feet is in place in the residential category, should 2 acre-feet be set aside specifically for ADUs? No. Should property owners be required to retrofit all water fixtures to the most efficient fixtures? Yes. Which category should mixed-income projects receive an allocation from, low and very low-income or residential? I don't think, I disagree, I think I said, I disagree with combining the commercial stuff and the single-family stuff into one category. So I think that this question doesn't, this question doesn't make sense according to what I think. But I would guess that a mixed-income project, you know, a project that came in, you know, on an empty lot, like on a parking lot, for example, not a hotel conversion, should take, some of its water would be required to take, you know, if it was, if it had de-restricted low-income units, it would take its water from the low-income category or however we, however we decide to reorder the categories. The low-income category and the remainder of the water for the other half of the units or the other 60% of the use should come from mixed-use residential. So that's what I would propose. I, you know, that's how I think we would keep the low-income water segregated from everything else. I don't know if that's legally possible. I think a lot of the things that we're going to talk about, I know that I've talked about require a change to the buckets that would, we would need to sort of go back and investigate. And then the last question is which category should the hotels or residential projects receive an allocation from, commercial or residential? And I think that we, you know, I think that these buckets should sort of be aligned with the housing element, that we should have, you know, Hans, Hans talked a few minutes ago about the hotel conversion project. And like, for example, the unit, the, the, the water units that are required for the hotel conversion project, which I think is a fabulous program, should be in their own category. And I think that there should be water reserved. So if it takes .4 acre-feet to convert one apartment or whatever it is that the numbers were that Marnie had up on the screen a few minutes ago, I think we should do some sort of simple analysis and say, we want to, you know, start this category with, you know, half of the hotel unit conversions that we're planning or hoping to get, figure out how much water we need for that and stuff that water into that category so that that category doesn't get stolen away, doesn't get stolen away by, by someone else. I, I do see, you know, the, the risk from the, the Water Resources Agency or the Salinas Valley Groundwater Management Agency. I don't see that as a particular risk because as Stephanie said, we have two, there's 2,000 acre-feet of water that's still unallocated. But I do see, you know, that's the known risk, that's the known risk that's associated with, with what's been brought up. But I do see that there's other legal risk that we don't know about. There are unknowns here. And I think we should be prudent, I think we should be prudent and figure all that. I think we should be prudent and sort of figure all that stuff out. So I think I've answered all the questions.
Thanks. Anywhere. That was, hold, go ahead, you can
Yeah, those, those are great. I mean, and if, if the rest of you have similar concerns and questions or suggestions or that require some math, we can, we can take some notes as well and we can come back to you. That's a lot of questions for us to
Yeah, and that was 20 minutes.
To alter the
I, I, I would propose that this is, if this is going to go down this path as opposed to voting for what the Planning Commission sent us, I think we need to continue this. I don't see any risk in doing that. I see risk in not doing the things that are on this agenda because we have business to do in the city and I don't want to be here till midnight.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask you to make a, a decision, Mayor, without, again, great questions. Mr. Pudo and I talked about some, some, creating some new categories real briefly today as well.
I mean, these are all good things and there's some serious discussions like what are the ADUs with their housing element in place?
Why do we have a planning commission?
Yeah, that's sort of what I'm thinking.
Come on, I mean, if we're going to redesign everything they've done, we're going to be here till 11 o'clock. And, or this will just keep coming back to us. I mean, this should be simple. The, the Planning Commission said, how about this? We don't know, we don't really know where we're going. Let's just get started and let's let people have some water. And, you know, Stephanie's on there, I think I have a lot of faith in her understanding of water. And I'm sorry, I'm not particularly interested tonight in trying to social engineer the future of this community tonight via, you know, water. I think we should just move forward and leave that social engineering to a different time. But I think people, people, the water's there. Let's let people have the water. So why not start there? And I, I'll make that motion and I don't know if two of you would vote for it.
Well, I, first of all, if we start the topic, I think we should finish the topic and hear from everybody on the council.
If we're going to do that, we should pause and go to the subjects that we have people waiting that need these contracts approved because we have to fix our fire station, we have to do some things. We can't continue those things.
Could I also mention that we're at 9:15 and we've got our 9:30 curfew that we need to decide if we are going forward with this.
Yeah, I mean, we just have some things we need to decide tonight. And I'm worried about, that's not getting there.
That's fair.
I agree, I agree with you, Bob. I'm willing, I'm willing to vote for the way it is. I don't, are you, Alessandra?
Well, let's not do that.
I'm just, I just like to know, since we're going to probably have to continue this conversation, I'd just like to get a feel for where everybody's at.
I see.
If everybody's where Jeff is, they're all good points. And And.
At a high level.
It will take us a while if we go through and each one of us provides a yes or no or maybe or an explanation for everything here.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I was just, on a side note, I was worried that this water issue was so big that we should have done a separate meeting on it. And this is exactly now.
That's right.
Turning out to be the case. So I, in a way, it feels unfair if the rest of us don't get to speak, but on the other hand, we're going to be here till like 1:00 in the morning if we all start really going into the details of all the rest of these.
If we're going to give it that kind of discussion, we need more time.
Right.
And I don't have experience at this, so Chip, you do.
Well, no, I mean, your choices are exactly as Mr. Delf suggested, which is you have the planning commission, they're a policy advisor to you, they deal with land use and, you know, the, our code requires them to make a recommendation to you, so you could second his motion and vote up or down on the recommendation of the planning commission, or we could, we could go into more detail and answer, you know, the questions, we could look for a special meeting date. Mr. Barron's leaving for, for a little bit, but we could look for a, a special meeting date, you know, after our regular meetings in November, but before Thanksgiving, but again, we keep pushing these things out and out and out. So, I mean, those are the, really the two choices I think you have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but I don't feel comfortable taking a vote without having everybody have their say, for sure.
Well, I would like to hear, I mean, even if, you know, I understand that I took some time to make, to answer all these questions that were asked of me, asked by staff, but I would like to, I think everybody should have a chance to answer the questions, and then we should come back. Like, I want to hear what everybody's answers are to these questions.
I do too, Jeff. I'm not, I am not making a comment about your comment.
Yeah, understand.
I thought it was, it was very interesting. I just, we just have to make decisions on the two contracts.
Yeah, those are, numbers four and five, Counselor, really need your decision.
We can push off the operation plan.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, Chief, we'll move the operations plan.
So how can we?
Can you, do we have the ability to put a pin in a particular item and circle back to it later in the meeting if there's time?
Yes, sir, of course, 100%.
I suggest we do that and try to move as quickly as we can on the, the two contract issues so that we can keep the city moving. And, and then we come back if, if, if we have voted on the.
Is there anything technically we need to do, Counselor, to, to do that, to, to put a pin in this one and move on to the next two items?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, let's do that, let's move on to the next one.
So, number four, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution approving construction contract for some physical repairs and alterations inside the fire department so that our new engine, which is coming in a few months, can, can wait, unless you have to, I mean.
I don't have to go through the whole thing.
Any, maybe there's any questions?
I move to approve because I know with confidence that my colleagues have read the staff report and understand exactly what.
And I've asked a lot of questions of him of all the contractors and all the bids, and, and I'm, I'm good with it.
So do you second the motion?
Anybody have any questions? I second the motion.
So I have a, I have a comment, I have a comment on this. You know, I, I will comment without being too pejorative about it, that the board emergency was used in the staff report a lot. And for me, an emergency is a flood or a fire or an earthquake or something like that. I don't think an emergency, I don't think an emergency is us waiting too long to get this before the city council. So I'll just say that, I said it, and I'm, that's my comment. And let's not, let's not let this happen again.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, same here, I agree.
I have a similar comment.
Okay, thank you, well, well.
That was one.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. I second it.
Yeah, so is it a roll call, Mr. Mayor?
A roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Dels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number five, Mr. Mayor and Council, what we're looking for is to avoid an emergency in the future is getting a contract, contract professional services agreement with ASONIO, they've done a lot of work for us in the past. And, you know, one of the big things is, again, be over-promising and under-producing in the, in the capital improvement realm. So hopefully, you'll approve this contract for not to exceed the amount of $146,000. We'll get them going on some of the capital projects that you just approved a couple months ago.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, any discussion?
I, I would just, again, glad you're here, Ken, and I think managing our internal and external project managers has at times not been a strength.
Correct.
In my opinion, and I believe it is a strength of yours, and I think it's just something we have to pay attention to, and I have a lot of confidence in, in you in that regard and the, and the selection of the, the outside resources that you're going to be using.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Dels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm going to leave it up to Chip in terms of item number six, do you want to do that as well?
Let's, can we, can I have a motion to, to, to continue that to a future meeting? It's, it's not a public hearing item, but we'll renotice it.
Yeah, and I have a request, which I've asked you about.
Yes.
I have a request, which I would really like, which I've asked you about this item, and that would be to have a redline copy of the differences between this emergency operations plan and the lab, the previous emergency operations plan.
I think the last one was 400 something pages, and this one's 80, so it's going to be very red.
Right, so it's not going to be, so I suspected that that was the case.
Yeah, I do, Chief, because I asked him, I said, do we have a redline version? And so he's, he's working on that, so that's a great reason for continuing this to a future meeting.
Yeah, I would have asked.
Yes, sir.
I would have asked anyway.
So just a quick.
Move to continue.
Thank you.
It's a good point, though.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Dels?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Tim.
So we've got through all those items, we still have a closed session here, too.
We, no, not tonight.
Are you killing? It was on, it was on. I got that.
Maybe you do.
Okay, never mind, I'm sorry, my, my script was wrong. All right, good, that's exciting. All right, so now we're going back to the water issue. Do you want to take a bio break?
Oh, yeah, let's do that for a five minute.
Yeah, five minute bio break.
Yeah.
No?
I'm actually six years old.
All right, everybody ready? We're gonna restart.
Sure.
Just so I can see where everybody stands and how we should proceed. Chip and I talked about this a little bit, about what we can do. But I'm just gonna go around and let everybody have their comments. Try to keep them brief, but if you need to talk, go ahead.
I'll just finish mine.
Okay.
Again, I'm interested in two things. One is getting some water allocated into some buckets that we won't regret is number one. And number two is just so that people who need some water right now can get it. And the second is to not disrespect anything you've been trying to do here, Jeff, but to move on to a better time and place to have the conversation. Because I agree, this deserves a three o'clock meeting, not a nine thirty meeting. And I wonder if there might be some interest in... And I really do want to understand the planning commission recommendation, but could we possibly just put three units, three acre feet in low income, three in residential, single family, two in residential, multifamily, none in ADUs, and for now, none in commercial? Because that will at least allow the folks that need some water tomorrow to get going.
Can you repeat the numbers just for my own notes, please?
And these are completely up for grabs. But three for low income, three for residential, single family, two for residential, multifamily, because that does separate them, Jeff. Zero for ADUs, because I think that's where the social engineering conversations happen. I'm not... I want to understand if your idea can work with the state basically saying, an ADU that pushes over the 1,800 doesn't get water. It's a very interesting idea. So I think maybe that's a conversation that we should just have later.
So that's eight acre feet, sir, and the balance of eight would remain in the unallocated? So nothing in commercial at this point?
Yeah, with a special meeting to happen in the next thirty days.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hans, do you want to go? Or Alessandra, you want to go?
Sure. And Bob, right now, just in writing that down quickly, that makes a lot of sense, and I would be supportive of that. Where to begin? Okay, I just wanted to point out, just for example, our 2023 housing element, we needed forty acre feet. With the amendment that the AHA group has been working on, that's down to thirty-two acre feet. I think that's terrific. And a lot of that is because they are going to be repurposing existing units that already have water and maybe only need a little bit more. So I think that's a really great thing. And I do agree with what Nancy said, especially since this is such a big topic. It might be better to have a more frequent update. You know, right now, it says one year every year through the planning commission. You know, even if we did six months, planning commission and council update on how the water is going. I think that that would be helpful to everyone, to just go through all the items real quick. So yes, I support three acre feet in the low income and very low income. I think that the single family and multifamily should stay separate categories. And I support what Bob just suggested with the three and the two, respectively.
Do you want the questions, Spencer?
Oh, I was gonna get to that. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, then let's skip the rest of it, because I support Bob's plan. That'll save us time. Policy questions. No for the ADUs being in a separate category. Yes to the retrofits. I think the mixed income should get low and very low income water from there. And the hotel to residential, I think, should be commercial. Was that it for all the questions?
I think so.
Okay.
That was the last question.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, Bob, I think that's a helpful notion to help us move forward while also letting us grapple with the complexity of it at a time when we're positioned to do that. So going through these real quick, I am all for allocating water to... I was gonna say a residential category, but it sounds like we're gonna keep them split out for the moment pending further discussion, which I think is, you know, is fine. You know, if somebody wants a third bathroom or an extra half bath in their sixteen hundred square feet, I think we should help them do that. You know, people have been starving for water for a long time. And we should certainly help with that. Let's see. I do think that, you know, carving out ADUs as a separate category is a good idea. I still think we're still trying to understand what ADUs mean for Carmel. I think we're trying to incentivize people to build ADUs that help us solve our population loss problem and trying to disincentivize ADUs that are just, you know, Sacramento-created end run around our local limits on square footage of single-family homes. You know, I think when we talk about one-size-fits-all state mandates, I think we need to, you know, be consistent in how we think about those things. So I thought that Jeff's idea was kind of interesting. I think that's something that we would need to explore in much more complexity. And this will give staff time to look into that. As sort of an addendum to what he had said, you know, I think we should also think about, you know, would we be okay going beyond the eighteen hundred square feet if we thought that ADU was gonna help us solve our population loss problem as opposed to just, you know, becoming somebody's home office? So I think that gives us some optionality going forward.
By deed restrictions.
Something. We still haven't solved that question. We've been at it for a year and a half, so we're not gonna solve it tonight.
No.
But it is a potential leverage point. In terms of the staff questions, what I heard from Stephanie was that the water management's gonna require us to do the retrofit, so maybe that's not actually a question. Which category should the mixed income projects receive an allocation from? Sort of a technical one. I personally think it should just be, if you have a project that's, you know... There are four categories in the housing element, right? Very low income, low income, above moderate income, and then above moderate. And the first three are the ones that are deed restricted. And so, but for the purposes of the water allocation, the very low and the low income are the ones that have their own dedicated bucket. And so, in my mind, you would just... Any project that had the low and very low income units would get the water from that bucket. And if you had a moderate income or a market rate unit, they would get the water from a, like a multifamily category, or if it was a combined residential from that category and just, you know, kind of based on the prorata divide of units. The other question was which category should the hotel-to-residential projects get their water from? You know, it's interesting. We have a situation where you have a property that has existing hotel rooms. They're getting converted into apartments. But if you think about it in the aggregate for the city, it's like you have the hotel rooms, and what we're actually doing is we are adding apartments to the city. And so I kind of think that the water should come from the multifamily or the residential bucket. So that's my take on that. And then I completely agree with Nancy. It's a great catch. You know, it's great to have this go to the planning commission, but given the sensitivity, I also think it's helpful to just get an annual update on this. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Marnie? Can you come up here? Not up here, but...
I have a question.
Go ahead while she's coming up.
So if Bob says, Bob's proposal is three acre feet for single-family units. So if an eighteen hundred square foot house comes to staff, and they say, "I want to build an ADU," will they be given water out of that three acre feet?
No. Because we're gonna create a separate...
ADU category.
We're gonna create a separate ADU category, right?
Okay, so that... So there's not a separate ADU category now, correct?
Correct. So there's no water for a new ADU.
Okay, but it sounds like the way we're going tonight is that there's a resolution that's gonna be passed under the existing categories that say we're gonna add three acre feet to the single-family category. And my question to staff is that if someone comes in next week with plans for an ADU after this resolution is passed tonight, will you give them the water that they need for their six hundred... Why? Why? On what basis would you deny that?
Because once you build an ADU, it's no longer a single family. It's multifamily, right? I mean, there's multiple units on it, it's meant for multiple families.
Is that correct?
The way that Mr. Delves characterized this is for three acre feet for residential, single-family residential development.
Well, if I build an ADU on my house for a caretaker, like, you know, if I become infirm tomorrow because Dale shoots bullets into my eyes for making these comments, is... Are you gonna give me, like... You're telling me that if I showed up with these comments, if I showed up with these plans tomorrow to build an ADU for my caretaker in my garage, you're gonna say no, you're gonna not have a multifamily house?
Correct. Based on the discussion thus far on this potential motion, correct, we would say no. With the knowledge, again, because part of the discussion is that you are going to eventually fund with water a separate allocation for accessory dwelling units. So just to be clear, I'm looking at Bob's sheet. Maybe this was easier for me to see, because I could see Bob's sheet. Bob's sheet has zero for ADUs. But if you look at my sheet, you see the same thing.
Before we get too far with this, Brian, can we even do this without giving staff input and drafting a new resolution and coming back at a later point? It sounds to me like we're getting off track from what the original resolution was.
Well, your resolution has the allocations that are set forth in the resolution. You do have the... You're not bound. This is a recommendation from planning commission and staff. So you have discretion as a council to make a different decision than the one that's recommended.
And you can do that tonight, and we can vote on it?
You can legally. I guess it's a question of whether, if the council feels there's a need for... Or if staff thinks there's a need for some further review at the staff level of what these proposed changes are, then, you know, that might be a question for staff. I've also heard some discussion about maybe having a special meeting in thirty days. So whether or not you'd want to wait until then.
Well, we're not gonna solve the whole problem tonight. What we're trying to see is if there's some off-ramp here where we can free up some water so people can start doing projects in certain categories while restricting other categories.
So, yeah, I have a question about just, you know, the amount of surgery that we can do to this resolution, you know, in real time. And I specifically am looking at Exhibit A. This reflects the combining of single-family and multifamily into a single residential category. So what you would need to do kind of in real time here on the dais is...
I hate that.
Yeah, I was waiting for Jeff to say that.
I think you could, no, I think...
What you would need to do is you would need to break that back out, presumably we have the old language, into single-family and multifamily. And then you would need to carve out the ADU references from the old language into a standalone new ADU category.
It's a month. You could do that. Or put it under the multifamily allocation, if you're gonna carve that out.
And I think what we all... I think what we want here is a standalone ADU bucket that is...
I'm willing to agree. Like, Bob's proposal, I'm willing to accept that. Like, that's fine. What I'm worried about is the whole bookkeeping. Like, you know, doing the surgery on the dais here, you know, ten minutes to ten. Not having the... Not having, what especially concerns me, is not having the resolution that we adopted in the package. Like, because it's gonna be difficult for someone next year to come back and say...
They didn't have a chance to do public comment.
What was the resolution? We did public comment.
No, I'm saying if we fundamentally change what we're doing, and we are, that nobody's had a chance, they're home.
And it's hard for us, it's hard for us to, like, imagine what the resolution's gonna be and...
Again, if you agree with Mr. Delves, you could direct us to bring a resolution back to that effect and still schedule a more advanced, single-focused topic meeting within thirty days.
Can I interject? So this red line here reflects the existing condition.
So the definition of single-family residential artfully says, "single-family residential."
Says nothing.
Just says residential.
It says nothing. So if you wanted, you could tell us to revert back to categories two and three as shown in this red line. And then we could add to single-family residential accessory dwelling units, zero. It would be that... We could do that.
Would... Can we just provide that direction here? Or do we need Brian to go back for five minutes and open up a Word document?
I can do that in five minutes.
Or we could come back next month.
Or you could have a special meeting. This resolution could be adopted as a special meeting. It's not... I don't think there's a requirement that it be done at a regular meeting. I'll just say that, given the amount of changes that you're talking about here, and I think I've also heard the comment about, you know, that the public hasn't seen what these changes are. You know, some of them may have gone to bed already. And just suggesting that you might want to consider the lack of public comment on this end product. And I also agree that, I mean, I've seen changes being made when they're relatively minor, but here, we're kind of doing something, I think, that's a little more different than... These are kind of multiple changes, if you will. It's not just changing a one to a two. I mean, you're talking about putting ADUs in a separate category and all the rest.
It's been a good discussion. We could do what we did for pickleball earlier. We could bring back kind of, not a dozen options, but a suite of options for you to choose from based on the discussion that we've heard. You know, like, two or three.
I think you should bring back Bob's item and then save my points and Alessandra's points and Hans's points for a different discussion.
Different and...
Like a more complicated... Like, Bob's thing is like ten minutes, and our discussion...
Consent agenda.
Yeah.
The motion is to put the resolution on the consent agenda for November, whatever. And we'll schedule a more in-depth conversation within thirty days of today.
I wouldn't recommend it not be on consent.
There's no reason to put it there if we all support it, so.
Good plan.
So if you give me a motion to that effect, we'll do that.
Bob?
I'm moved that... Help me.
Yes, if you make a motion to directing me to bring back a resolution, a water allocation that breaks down with finding for decision, breaks down a total of eight acre feet, three acre feet into the low and very low income housing category, three acre feet into the single-family residential allocation category, two acre feet into the multifamily residential water allocation category, and then schedule the balance that goes in, the balance which...
And zero feet in ADU.
Create a new ADU category.
Create a new ADU. You can do that later with zero acre feet.
I actually want to create it, just for...
Oh, you do want to create it, okay.
There's zero there.
Create it, and then put the balance in the unallocated reserve.
I make that motion.
And there was zero for commercial.
Yeah, commercial's zero.
Oh, sorry, yeah, zero for commercial as well.
I make that motion.
And do we... Marnie? Is there still category six, is that...
Do we mention municipal?
And I would... I'll second the motion, but I... I'll second the motion, but, you know... I'm resisting the urge to do a tiny bit of surgery on it to allow ADUs to be in the single-family category if they don't bring the square footage above sixteen hundred square feet. Blow it off.
I think that's for the later discussion.
Okay.
It's a whole other interesting discussion.
Okay.
So, Marnie, this is what we're supposed to... This was the allocation on the back page, still?
That was the planning commission's recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is a category six to the Mallory. Do you still have to put that there?
Yeah, Mallory will stay.
Yeah, we'll carry that over.
So there's one other one that's not on our list.
But we're splitting residential.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And we got the municipal reserve, too, but we'll just carry those over.
Yep.
Our apologies to the planning commission, but we need to have a further discussion. This is just to get things rolling.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear anything about the municipal.
Carrying that over as well, sir.
Okay.
So you've got a motion in a second.
Yes, sir. Yeah, Mr. Delves made the motion, Mr. Barron seconded it.
Anybody have a discussion before we vote?
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Yes.
Councilmember Jama?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Is that it? Are we done? Anybody have the agenda?
I think we're done.
All right, we're done. All right.
I think we were supposed to...
We have future agenda items.
At nine thirty, weren't we supposed to have a motion to continue the meeting?
Does anybody on the dais or in public have a future agenda item they want to talk about?
So just for everyone's benefit, we'll do agenda review not... I think, is it next Wednesday, or next Tuesday?
It was next Tuesday.
The fourteenth at eleven, so I'll keep you all apprised on what's on that agenda.
Thank you, everybody, for a good meeting again. Appreciate it. We are closed.
Thank you, Jeff.